Good afternoon, I'm called the Board of County Commissioners. Meeting to order, roll call, all Commissioners are present. Pledge allegiance, Lori, would you like to lead this? Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of America, which is standing ovation. Under oath, inevitable.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the business agenda, there's one add-on. Adding the fiscal manager Jen Neal. Discuss the 2025 calendar budget under unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the business agenda with one add-on fiscal manager Jen Neal.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, approval of the Commissioner meeting minutes of January 7th.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes of January 7th as presented.
A second.
Okay, been moved in second, any discussion on the minutes? Here are no discussion, we'll vote on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. People present, if you want to speak, raise your hand, please come forward. If you're joined by Zoom, please raise your hand. And unmute yourself when called upon, what's your call? By me. You'll have three minutes or less to speak. So anybody in the room? Yes, please. And I didn't see if those mics were unmuted.
Here or here?
It doesn't matter, whichever one's green.
Right.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'll pass it over, 11:17 mark, close of Saturday. Want to make this a matter of public record pertaining to the fire at a battery storage plant spurred evacuations. And some of you are aware of this, I spoke already through Facebook, I don't see that, I saw it in the wall. Fire that major battery storage plant in Northern California prompted the evacuation of residents of nearby residents. And the closure of schools and parks of Highway 1 nearby. The residents in the area around the lost land in car plant, Sean Bub in Monterey County were evacuated late Thursday after the fire broke out. No immediate casualties were reported. Schools were closed Friday in Northern Monterey County. County health officials advised residents to stay indoors with windows indoors closed. The battery storage plant owned by the Texas-based Vistra is one of the world's largest, meaning thousands of lithium-ion batteries. That are charged using solar power. The interview is placed on a grid when the sun goes down, the facility's capacity was expanded last year to 3,000 megawatt hours. Vistra said the fire was detected Thursday afternoon at the storage plant. And that all site personnel were safely evacuated, the fire didn't continue Friday. The cause hasn't been determined and the investigation will begin once the fire is extinguished. Vistra spokesman woman Jenny. On a further comment. Couple of years ago, there was a fire in New York State. And in a similar facility, it burned for five days and they could not put it out. So anyway, want to make that a matter of public record, thank you for hearing me.
Well, thank you for coming and speaking.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Let's see, well, when next?
Oh, Roger?
Okay, there, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, this is a softie for getting guys started easy, it'll get harder later on. But I'm just curious to the two, one new and one returning Commissioner. What's been the biggest surprise since you started the first of the month? What things surprised you the most about that and Lori, what surprised you the most about these two? Thank you.
Thank you, Roger, I'll just clearly stating quickly. It's the pace of what is happening. How much comes at you, I just don't remember it being this. So much information and so many things going on at the same time. Just make it quick.
And I'll make it quick, Roger, I don't think it's a surprise, I think. I'm just really, really pleased. With who my teammates are as people, kind and considerate, thoughtful. And I'm really, really pleased with their dedication to the job. Todd even said today, I'm in it for the long haul, I heard him say, and it's. It, it is, it's a long haul, it's a lot of work and it's a surprise how much work there is, but I see both of them. Spending a lot of hours and doing their due diligence and it's great to have people in the office.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know if there are any surprises, but I definitely agree with Ron that. How much is coming in and if my hope is that. Future boards and people coming on that. If we're eight, you know, some timelines you can't affect. When contracts and when things happen, but. If ones that we can, if we can set up, you know. You know, a lot of these contracts not to go before. March, to give the new board a time to handle the business at hand, so.
To breathe.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone in the room would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone at this time.
Kaylee?
Kaylee?
Good afternoon, I'm, this schedule change is killing me. But, good for you guys for making changes to see what works best. I wrote a statement, so I'll stay on topic. I want to express my concerns regarding the process for appointing members to the Planning Commission. Specifically, I'm troubled by what appears to be an automatic reappointment of returning members without a thorough consideration of other applicants. The Planning Commission plays a critical role in shaping the future of our community. And it's vital that we have fair, transparent, and competitive selection process. Automatically reappointing returning members, no matter how experienced, risks overlooking the fresh perspectives, diverse expertise, and innovative ideas that new applicants might bring to the table. It is my understanding that we have many qualified and passionate community members willing to serve. By not giving their applications the serious consideration they deserve, we send a discouraging message to those who want to get involved in the local government. I respectfully urge the Commission to reconsider its appointment process and prioritize inclusivity, diversity, and merit-based selection. This approach not only ensures that the Planning Commission remains dynamic and representative of our county, but also fosters greater trust and engagement around among residents. So that's for that, and then the other thing. I would like to encourage you guys to Zoom your Thursday workshops, I don't know if that's happening or not. I did have a very long conversation with Joan Fry about it and. I do get, you know, the positives of having people, you know, community members come in and interact, but. In this day and age when so many people aren't working, it's really hard to go and spend several hours in Golden Dale. So anyways, that's it for today and enjoy the cold sunshine.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone in the room? Yes.
Yes, cold tall shine is right, very cold. I laughed. Andrew Smith, Clicktack County. There's a couple of subjects that have been touched on already, real quick, I do plan to go to the planning meeting tonight, since it was moved. The meeting's on Thursdays, since I was the only peanut gallery person there on Thursday. I will say it was very productive, learning and quite unexpected on a few subjects, but I think. With no camera there, if you want to show up and be at any meetings is a good thing. It was very informative, very learning. And I remember in the old days when there was no videos, cameras, you had to attend the meetings personally, you had to make time to do this stuff. So I made the time to show up in the peanut galleries. And good luck on the board from here on out. And the meeting this morning was quite impactful too, learned a few things too, it's like all my life, it just doesn't end, does it guys? You keep laughing on that. And any other comments I'll do is, we'll be at the regular meetings attended for specialized items, thank you very much and good luck.
Again.
Thank you for your comments, I, I felt the, the Thursday's been very productive. I, I think. It was. Staff opened up, I thought was very productive, now it's what we as a board sit down. And what we do with the information and the elected officials in the afternoon was really, really productive, very informational. There was some good lively discussions, why do you call it, positive, I think. And even in the morning was really positive and I don't know if we would have had those conversations. If we would have zoomed it, I'm sorry, but. Those are the process we need to do and I think Delmar we need to evaluate, that's fair, it's not set in stone forever, but I think we've got some things we need to accomplish. But I appreciate the public's comments, both ways, it's good on them. Pat?
Hi, this is Pat Arnold from Trout Lake, I have two. Topics I want to speak on today and one is. The Thursday workshops, which we were delighted, many of us who don't live near Golden Dale and who can't make an hour drive each way or more than an hour. We're delighted to have those workshops on Zoom and. Keep in mind that that's when you talk about the budget and that's where most of us can learn. Something about the budget and that process and. I prefer personal meetings myself, absolutely. But. I think that there's huge benefit in having those Thursday workshops on Zoom. And if you run your meetings in a good way, you'll have those same conversations. You'll be in person. And you can still have good conversations even if the cameras are on. That's one of the real benefits of, of the. You know, our technology moving forward, so I really urge you to reconsider that decision to not Zoom your Thursday workshops. The other thing is that I found out yesterday, or I guess the day before, that. My internet in Trout Lake is now permanently. Out of function. I've been with Gorgonet for many, many years and now with Blue Mountain. And I am not the only person in Trout Lake who's having a lot of trouble, it is fault of CenturyLink. Blue Mountain in some places has. A way to deliver their service directly, but in Trout Lake they have to rely on CenturyLink. And CenturyLink, I mean, I can name four or five people right off the top of my head who in the last few days have had trouble. And the state attorney general is looking into CenturyLink, as you probably know, CenturyLink put in an application to abandon landline service. There was hearings about that, those hearings are now closed. But I really wish that the Board of County Commissioners would use your influence and your power. To put some pressure or support whoever is putting pressure on CenturyLink. To provide the service that they are supposed to provide, we have subsidized them over and over again to install. Fiber optic lines and this kind of stuff and to bring service to your rural areas and they are not doing it, I think this is an issue in Snowden as well. So I'm requesting that you take some action here, you check with Blue Mountain and find out exactly what the problems are. Dan Bub is back again, thank goodness there and I'm sure you know him. And. Find out from the Attorney General and the Public Utilities Commission, whatever it's called, and see what you can do to help us out, I mean, I'm going to be out internet permanently. And this is a problem, thank you.
Thank you for talking, Pat. Anyone else in the room? Like to speak? See you none, is there anyone else online that would like to speak? One more time, we'll ask anyone in the room? Oh, okay, yeah, Delmar.
Yeah, hello, yeah, I was just wondering, you know, you. We have a budget shortfall, I mean, there's no question about that. But you know, there is a chance to be creative because the renewable energy projects are. Receiving. Very positive consideration that they pay the least amount of tax. And, but what I'm saying is that you could, people need to be creative and start producing and getting things going for. Putting revenue back into the county, I mean, you have a fairground that sits up there, most of the time empty, you could have a. Tool show, you could have a, an RV show, you could have a, you know, gun show, I guess, we can still have that in. State of Washington, but I mean, there's a lot of opportunities up there, we just had a, a pretty amazing thing where five planets. Lined up and we have an observatory here and it would have taken an easy call to KATU in Portland. And let them know that the observatory was going to be watching the transformation of these, and you would have had the motels, the restaurants full. And which produce revenue, I mean, and then there's countless places in this county you could. Advertise somebody to put in a zip line, which would be, I mean, we have some of the most fantastic places to put a zip line in. And that's all revenue for the county, but this idea that when you run short on the budget, all you have to do is raise taxes. It would be really nice if you guys would get on the ball and start promoting Quick Attack County Tourism, because that's where the money's at right now, because it's not going to be. Any of these taxes and renewable energy, because it's not there, it's been proven already. But that if you guys would get with the program and start introducing some tourism into this county, we could have at least maybe nine months. Of income coming in and you could apply the sales tax of whatnot to your budget, but. This is one thing that you people really need to take a look at, instead of coming after people for more tax money. Is start generating your own economy in this county, that's my comment.
Thank you, Delmar, appreciate that.
Can I, I make a quick comment, I just had this very conversation with Chelsea and Economic Development this morning. So thank you for bringing it up.
No, I agree, looking at additional revenue sources. Taking a step back and what we have, maximize the use of what we have, I, I hundred percent agree with that. I appreciate the comment. Is there anybody else in the room would like to speak? Okay, online, Becky?
Hi, good afternoon, I used to saying good morning, it's my first, one o'clock. I'm kind of late to the party on the workshop Zoom thing and I'm just curious, I've missed the last few meetings. I'm just curious why you made that decision to not have the workshops on Zoom so that. The public could at least listen in if not participate, thank you.
Thank you.
Todd, you had a statement I really liked.
Yeah. Because having workshops downstairs.
Yeah, Tuesday morning, we, we, we start with a workshop and we're discussing the things that we're going to vote on. Thursdays is a more relaxed. With department heads and electeds and, and various other things, of course, they're open meetings. But. You, you're, you know, if, if you're gonna, because sometimes if you're talking about personnel or something like that. You don't want to be spreading rumors, so there's, this county's, a lot of stuff has kind of been held in and decisions not made because. So it's, it's, it's very untransparent, even though you're Zooming everything, a lot of stuff doesn't get done because. Things aren't brought up and departments don't feel comfortable sharing them, and so everything that we talk about on Thursdays. That we hash out and then we, if we decide to come up with a good idea, we bring it in on Tuesday mornings and talk about it further, so. And maybe, maybe eventually we'll get Zoomed, if we wanted to have it down there in a big roundtable meeting where the public and all of us are sitting at the same level and talking about those things, so.
Appreciate it, I, I just made it clear, my, my plan was to have workshops, especially downstairs where we could have communication with staff. It's an open public meeting, anybody's welcome to come. And you're right, there is no Zoom downstairs at this time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else online?
Joe, I don't know if he wants to.
Joe, did you want to speak, I see you up on top muted. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody inside or. Or on Zoom, maybe now's a good time to discuss some of the items we talked about during the workshop. I. I, I know the first workshop we discussed, which we still need to follow up on, is the board setting goals. And we kind of came up with. Six different things, from budget to short-term rentals, franchise fees, impact fees, I mean, that kind of falls in line with what Delmar was talking about. And then other people at the meeting here had suggested other income, code compliance, discussion of fire. A lot of homes been losing their insurance out in the community. Natural resource inventory, those are kind of the main six goals. Not saying that's all, but we still need to fall back up and come back, then we had a meeting with staff. Which was a good meeting, now I'll try to go back to my notes. Yes. Lot of, lot of good discussion, as simple as. Are we as the board communicating with our departments, I, I thought that was a real good start off. And then how do we communicate with our departments, there seems like there's been a communication gap internally. You know, I've heard a lot of people talk about externally. But you really don't hear a lot about internally. So that came up. Talked about. Well, parking even came up, as simple as parking, how many spots for the public should we leave for parking, where should employees park our work vehicles, where should employees park? That, just that simple. Talked about different. Being involved more with the multiple fire districts. And if there's something you think of, Todd, just feel free to jump in. There was a lot of good discussion the afternoon when we met with the elected officials. We did have a discussion with East District, West District Court Judges. On just discussion of pre-trial monitoring, just to get us up to speed on that. Talking about. Public safety. Talked about buildings and grounds in general.
Animal shelter.
Yes, animal shelter came up, how long that? It's good for one more year, the.
We'll lose funds if we don't.
And then the question of if we build it. They'll come, but how are we going to maintain it?
Yeah.
Because it's a long discussion, it's easy to build something, but how do you maintain it in the long run?
Free money can be really expensive.
Yes. Talking about construction internally, that when we're having it, try to limit. The noise while people are trying to get work done and the public's coming in, when. Talk about remote working policies, what do we have, what do we not have? Discussion of comp time. Needing comments on a grant writer, whether we need a grant writer, not have a grant writer. Discussion came up about election. Salaries?
Now, I don't know if a lot of the public knows that. There are a lot of grant writers working. In the, within the county. But there, there's, there's not one over the whole county, but.
They're, they're kind of right now in the county broke up by department.
Yeah.
And I think the bigger problem is grant administration, after we get them managed.
Yeah. Yeah, we heard that from the.
Yes, this morning.
This morning of managing these grants, may not be as easy to get them, but. How do you manage it? That was kind of accountability within departments had come up. I think we even had some of that discussion earlier today of. How do you hold different departments accountable, what's the measure? You know, it was some good round discussion. On various things and we still, as a board, need to come back together, circle and set what's priority. Even from our goals and. You know, are we going to take on a couple of things at the same time or, or what, so we still need to come back. Just because. It was discussed that it may not be a priority. Which still has to come back, but I felt it was some very good open discussion, I appreciate people's comments, I understand what they're saying. Zoom is. The wave of how it is, but. I'll just be frank, it's old fashioned and I said, if I'm elected, this is what I was planning to do. At, at, at least for the short term, so we can work out some of our issues internally. Mind-blowing. Dylan, and I think it's very important for the Commissioners to meet downstairs. And with who we're meeting with, we're all at the same level. The Commissioners are not above anybody, we work for the people. You know, we're elected by same as all the other elected officials in Clicktack County, I don't need to be sitting above them when I'm having a discussion with them. I, you know, a lot of things like that, it doesn't mean a lot to people, but it does, I, from being an employee. I understand that concept, but that, that's my perspective and that's fine, we're three board members and we have three different sort of opinions, which is good. And I appreciate the comment, talking about it. Did I miss anything that we kind of came up? I mean, there are several other things, talking about vacation, whether we should have PTO with the vacation. And safe leave from comp time, how much is allowed, it's all liability we have. That we have to report. So there's quite a bit.
Give us a, a great recap for things we need to work on, and then every day we find more.
Well, there is, and even with us setting the goals on the six items that we said we wanted, setting the goals. I'll guarantee here in three or four months, something's going to come out that we're going to go nine or three sideways. I see you're slow going, you, you do your best intention, just put it out in front, I think it's important for us to let our staff and public know what our.
I think someone brought up to me too. The workshops allow us kind of a more candid place for the work of the Commissioners and I won't quote it correctly, Todd, but you said last week. You made a statement about you might float six good ideas. And, and be able to banter back and forth and come out with one, and as we're having those test conversations, sometimes it's misinterpreted and then things escape out. Over Zoom that is. Brought to the public as the truth that is now moving in a different way. So the workshops give us a way to vet through all those different ideas and work where we don't have the time during. The Tuesdays or the Thursdays where they're zoomed, it becomes. It just is a hard way to work if you can't have private discussions and. It just is a hard way to work if you can't have prime discussions and. Our regular days are the work of the people. And those are the work of the commissioners to be able to have workshops and just be able to work together.
And, and we agree, we're not taking any action in the workshop. It will come here. Or we zoom or main meeting and, and take actions. I appreciate, uh, it was brought up, what about budget time? And I, I think we all agree, it's not a bad thing, zooming.
Yeah.
The, the budget. Just to keep people informed of the budget. That's, that, that's low. So it's now the, uh. Hour one thirty, we have a bid opening. Public Works, uh. White plastic edge lines.
Oh, yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Quick question from staff on this. Was there any amendments to this bid? Okay. So the only thing we're going to pay attention to is whether the bid bond's present, right?
We actually give you a cheat sheet. She's got.
If there is a, there'll be marked on the instruction sheet.
Yeah.
Okay. I just. I, I, I know if there's an amendment, you've got to recognize the amendment. And. With bid bond present.
We give, we give a cheat sheet from the Rex Johnson.
Okay.
Oh, I see. It's just written really small.
We have three bids. If you want to call it bid when you open it.
Yes. So the first is, I'm trying to think the right one, like open up colors. Okay, so we have specialized. Permanent markings.
Pavement.
Pavement markings, there it is, specialized pavement markings.
Which should be permanent.
Yeah.
So the engineering estimate was two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. In the.
Really?
And the bids have to be within. I mean, we'll send it back to you to review, but they have to be within fifteen percent of the engineering estimate, or it's had to change.
There is, there is no.
There's no. Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, Marie.
I'd like to be in the middle, though.
And the bid bond is present.
Okay, bid bond is present. The last. Page of total amount.
Okay, I see. And the contract total is two hundred and fourth thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thank you.
Our second one is. Construction Ahead Incorporated GBA Pavement Surface Control.
It's got a whole.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
She's opening that wrong. What, what, what was the amount?
It was two, two oh four, nine sixty-three, thirty-six. If I wrote it down correctly.
Uh, and the bond is present. Contract total bid is two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Thank you. One more.
And the last is for Hicks Striping and Curving LLC. The bid bond is present. And the total bid is two hundred and fifteen dollars. Eight hundred and eight, or two hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Yeah, two one five, eight eight four, sixty-four, correct. Right. So those are the three. Is there a motion? To set all the bids back to Public Works?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
For the review and, uh, recommendation?
I'll make the motion that we send the bids back to Public Works for their recommendations.
A second.
Bid moved a second, any discussion? All right, go forth and do it good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. It's always good to start the new year off with, uh, good prices. And this is a good time to be bidding stuff out too, with people lining their workup. So I very much appreciate everyone doing that.
So, um, moving on to consent agenda.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with twelve items.
Okay, bid moved. The motion's been seconded, open for discussion. I, I got. My answer this morning was staff, especially from Public Works. I needed to understand the environment bridge project. And help the department clarify what they, so. Here in the war discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Some reason I, I, I missed, uh, yeah, page in the middle here.
Okay. So, um. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of nine five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And thirty-four cents for the date ending January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, moved, it's been seconded, any discussion? Here and done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Public Works appears to maybe look sounds too different. It's on the second.
Yeah, I was going to say help move it, uh.
So do you just need a motion? A motion to approve the pay estimate number one and the final for the Pioneer Center first floor. Restroom floor covering replacement in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay, bid moved.
And I second that.
Been seconded. You want any discussion?
No, the, my, my pause was the same thing because of how it was broken up.
Yes.
On, on the page and I was starting to find that earlier.
I remember Jeff talking about this, but it wasn't last week. All right, we'll vote on the motion unless you have any further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on, on the agenda is unfinished business. We're moving ahead.
What do we have? Sharon, Neil, Shu.
Jen, okay, uh.
I hear.
I hear. We are moving.
Yes.
It looks a lot on the page.
Well, yeah, we have a, a Board of Health meeting at two, so. It's great. Jen, thank you very much for, uh.
Listening in and.
Moving right along. Well, that's why.
I was trying to print. You guys beat me to it. Rolling. Um. So if you could track where I'm, where I'm going with this, we left a discussion, um, on the table in regards to the twenty twenty-five budget calendar. Um, and I was going to propose. Options for the board, um. I have met with the auditor, um. Quickly gone over the calendar and. Um, this is something that, um, statutorily she needs to stand for approval on it. Uh, so she was fine with this. I had heard. At least one commissioner, uh, request to start a little bit later, um, so. There is a way that we can work around, um, budget dates, statutory dates. There's some statutory dates that we have the ability to change. Uh, with, with a resolution. Uh, with that being said. Though, those dates would be when the budget estimates and the debt service estimates are due. From departments and offices to the county auditor. Um. Statutorily, those are due August twelfth. Which is. Right at the beginning of Fair Week.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Then the other statutory date that we have the ability to change is. The date that the auditor and. Statutorily, the auditor presents the preliminary, um. Budgets to the board. I do it on behalf of the auditor. Um, that is statutorily set at, uh, September third. That's something that we can adjust. Um, then the final budget hearing, um, is statutorily set for October seventh. Um, there is an alternate budget hearing date of December second. We are only able to do those two dates. So. In the years prior.
December eighth and seventh, or?
December second.
Second.
And October second. Those are only two options for a hearing date. Um. When I came into this role, the board had requested. To start getting these budgets done sooner. Let's give more time. To work on it, um, away from the holidays, not stress our staff out around holiday time. Um, I'm a department of one and this is a heavy burden. Um, on my workload, uh, when we start scratching those dates together. I, of course, am willing to do whatever the board decides. They would like to do, give it a trial run. Per se. So. We had moved the budget estimates up earlier. From the August date. Um, when it was always deadline before fair. But, um, we had moved it up. To give me some more time to be able to prepare and do analysis. What we do now, um, in the process that we have now is I meet with. My fiscal group. And we make sure that we tie out the revenues, the big revenues, because what. Our county, the way our county is always functioned with the budget is each department budgets. Their own revenues and their own expenditures. Well, they might have a, a portion of. Um, property tax, sales tax, timber tax, but so they'll just budget. A fraction of it, but that might not be the bigger picture.
So you give them the number to plug in?
So what we, what we do, I let them go ahead and budget originally. And then we tie it out, like, is that going to, like, holistically pull those, all those numbers together and does that look like a realistic number? And because I firmly believe that more brains are better than one. Um, I work closely with. The treasurer on the revenue side of things and the auditor, and we brainstorm that, like, what, we look at the economics. Um, and. What do we know that's coming into the county and see what we think that that number is, what we can stand behind and feel good about presenting to the board. Um. So that's an added piece that hasn't been done before me. And so, so I like to get all of this put together, give myself some time to do some analysis. Call in a meeting, um, with that fiscal team. Review it before we submit those preliminaries to the board. Do I think I can get it done in two weeks timeframe? I can try my best. But it will be. Not easy. But I'm willing. To throw out an alternative date of August nineteenth. And again, that. And that's getting the budget estimate to do. The only department I see that that really benefits is the fair budget, which is fine, that's.
That's probably why I came from that perspective.
I know you did. I know you did. We talked about, we talked about before you became.
Because we're budgeting. Well, we haven't really even had the fair and.
Yeah, you're having to, the fair is having to actually do the forecast like everybody else.
That may not even make a difference.
And you better leave it early.
But. You know, there are a lot of departments, um, directors, officials who the fair weekend, you know, they're, they're at fair as well. They have a heavy hand in that, um. So. I can keep it the twelfth or before fair. I can throw in an alternate date, which I have on this calendar of the nineteenth, which is the Monday after fair. I don't know who that benefits other than the fair.
Nobody's going to get it done.
But I don't know that the fair would be able to get it done either in time by then.
No, I, it's a good point. It just seems real early. As, as long as we have the ability to change things up to the adoption. On some things.
Yeah, um.
Capital's the one that seems to me that sticks out when. We realize the capital project that was set up, it's going to be a lot more money because you opened the bids.
Yeah.
Before the budgets adopt and how do you? Change it.
Correct.
But it.
And in prior years, I, we had already started workshops in August.
Yeah.
So. This, for this twenty twenty-five calendar, I don't have any workshops scheduled in August. So that gives everybody a chance to take a breather. Um, I mean, they'll have to have their budget estimates done regardless before fair. Um, whether, whatever date I chose, but. Um, I could give them more time, so it's in August instead of the end of July. Um, and we'll just pause workshops until September. That seems fair. Um. I could throw out. An alternative preliminary budget, um. Presentation day, that one we can change. So instead of the first week, right after Labor Day, um, I could do it the next week. And then, um. See what that looks like. Because notoriously. Um. There's some hiccups. On, on getting either budgets loaded or getting budget estimates in on time and, and those types of things. So it just kind of adds. A couple more days of a buffer. Um, but then to immediately start workshops the week of the eleventh of September. Or I can, or I can stick with the original preliminary date and if things go smooth, that's probably what I would do, since it would just be an option to have the alternative dates. And we start that first week of September with workshops. I, I will know more on how things are going to go once we get into August.
Actually. That's a suggestion.
I like.
I, I'm hoping we're going to have. Some discussion on the budget, so hopefully when we get to. Budget time, we as a board have a pretty good idea of what we need to request. As a result for our. People, financially, where we need to hold the line.
I would love that.
Or what flexibility we do have or don't have. I, I'm hoping. We spend the time on it to get to there.
Absolutely, and, and I think that's completely plausible and, um. Just having regular workshops and budget conversations throughout the year will take the burden. I'm. It, it's not everybody's favorite topic, money, is it?
But it landed as our number one priority.
But it was, it was the board's priority and, um, it is something that we need to start taking a more strategic approach. In my person, in my opinion, um. Rather than just. In the moment, what's in front of our face in the moment, um, approach. So. At this point in time, I've just built September with workshops. Um, we can always add workshops as we go, um, but. I personally, I would hope that we don't have to call every department in for a workshop, um. As Commissioner Iriga and, um, Zoller has seen the difference between. We've, we've changed from everybody coming in and, you know, presenting their memo and their budget to. Taking that time with the board and the fiscal team to review what's in the, what's in the budget. Is there anything that we need to talk about? And then pulling those departments and offices in. Um, to have those discussions instead of having everybody funnel through. It seems to be. Working well, um, from the feedback that I've been getting from offices and departments. So unless the board would like to. So unless the board would like to change things up, I'd like to just propose that um at this moment in time. Of course, we. As the year goes on, we can adjust that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, it it may be if we need to do. Some funding removals from departments, it's good to have them come in so we have the discussion.
Yes.
Of what our intent is, uh otherwise some of them. Well, that's what I was looking at, Rob. I don't wanna get into detail here. But otherwise, yeah, I I I like. Uh your process where you guys did last year. Just sitting in watching uh. There's some. Yeah, I I probably wouldn't even ask them to come in.
And you know, as we go throughout the year, we can get more detailed on um the memos that they present with their budgets on. What the board would like to see in those memos that maybe is already gonna answer the questions that the board may have.
Some. Some departments and offices will still request to come in.
Yep.
And I don't think you've you, they've never been told no. And sometimes it's just when they come in and wanna talk to you and if things are done different this year, they may feel like. They've had that chance to talk to you together.
Yeah, and I don't know whether this is right or wrong, but I've been told even at the end of the process. For certain funding cut. Or not cut. But it's making sure we're communicating back to those departments that we remove your twenty five thousand out of cap.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, yeah. I use that as an example in order to balance the budget. Just to keep everybody on the same board that they know. That when they look at their budget and say, well, I got this much expense, but I only have this much revenue. You know, what I cut.
So anything that um was adjusted. I transitioned twenty twenty four budget um year into smart sheets. Uh because our our one, a couple, a couple of things. First off is the new system that we are implementing, the new ERP system. Utilizes smart sheet, so it's kind of tip their toe in the water. So hopefully the learning curve isn't as as much for the departments. Um the next was, so smart sheets is a wonderful tool to be able to track and communicate through. So any change in adjustment is that was made. Um the department was tagged in and a comment was made, so they were alerted that any changes that were made. Um and what and they were able to see side by side um. What those differences were. It also helps me when it comes to loading the budget because after a full day of workshops, it's very challenging to go back and remember. Um so I. In the past, I I sat over there as you saw and I worked on the computer on the screen um. As the board was talking and making those decisions.
Right. I think you're right. We didn't, we didn't have this last.
There just was a gap from me sitting in the audience at the very end.
Cause we voted.
You still needed to massage.
We needed to.
A million, million and a half dollars and.
Nothing, nothing was cut from that.
And had the discussion.
Um.
But it it just kind of seemed to me.
I don't think.
In my personal opinion, it's a gap.
I think it's a respect thing, even if we make a decision, we probably should have.
I like conversation based.
Absolutely.
That's me. I uh.
I do my, I do my best to communicate with them. And but it does make a difference when the board is communicating directly with the directors.
We never make those decisions, we need to communicate with them directly.
And I appreciate that.
Decision to make, we should make you. Have to go do that.
I appreciate that.
Should be our.
Especially it's a tough.
Well, I will, I will.
I I have, I will let you know that I have never had any pushback or problems with any elected or or um director, so. Um. I'm I'm capable of handling that too, but it does make it, it does make a difference coming directly from the board um. And I'm sure it makes a difference to the directors and executives.
Lori, with your expertise, with your years in the field, what's the, did, did the, did those times matter?
I I think so, because now looking back hindsight. We did make decisions and we're the board that talked about it and we voted on it. And then it was handed to Janet and just went away. And I think it's a matter of respect that if we decide to cut something, we should communicate that with someone. And say why we had to make that decision.
At minimum, if it's an email from the chair, that would be. At the bare minimum. Sorry, Ron, I was saying in general.
Uh we'll put it a little later.
All right, well, I just fell on Ross or Ross.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like that was kind of a misstep.
No.
Missed, we missed doing.
After listening, when we gather out there, more of the discussion we as a board could have the better right of.
I agree.
Uh and sometimes we just miss it, not knowing you miss it.
You know, budget is stressful, there's a lot going on, there's everything else that's still going on and. There is a crunch, there are deadlines, there are hard deadlines that we can't miss. Um and so it's just like, oh, you know, we, everybody gets in that zone. And it's really hard to be able to circle back at the very.
It is.
End of the day and be like, oh, do we need to have another workshop in twelve D?
Be because mine is, I understand as a department head. You're focused on your budget, your personnel. Uh it's kind of like when I worked power, all the crews said they knew what they had to deal with, but they didn't see the big picture. We have to see the big picture, each department sees their department and how do we come back? At the end where the board's not having to send emails.
Yes. Yeah, we we can figure that out um as we go.
No, I I.
Could look like um. And hopefully. Hopefully we could get enough information ahead of time and have those discussions in advance.
Yes.
That where all the departments, although are thinking of themselves, also have a. Unified feeling and teamwork and want to. Maybe, maybe we can get ahead of it.
Because, because in fairness, even since I've been here, can't speak for a talent. I've heard major needs from five departments and mine is. Well, overall budget is X and. I I understand everybody has needs, but. One, I don't wanna be piecemeal in needs either, because that's what catches up to you, is piecemeal in this department.
First sir.
This department, this department, and then they all hit you up.
It it really, it really does and um especially. Staffing. Staffing.
That's exactly.
And when we don't have, when we don't have um a budget review. Before making those decisions, then we could find ourselves in trouble, in trouble.
I just like it when Erin comes in and she says, I have the money.
I know.
It's not the people who fill, it looks like nickel and part. Money's not the issue, it's the first male filling. That's exactly what they said. Was it rich?
Yeah, that that is very true. Um so I'm. If you've already gotten a lot of requests for staffing needs, um let's maybe. I suggested this to Rob last week. Um. Maybe we just press pause for a month or the first quarter, we get those requests itemized out. Um and we take a look at the big picture. Um what are the priorities? Because everybody, everybody needs.
Yes.
See, I mean, I I would be the first one in up here to be like, I need half of a person to help me with this.
It's been new positions, right?
Yes.
Not currently, but.
But to, or ones that aren't funded yet.
Yeah, not funded.
Non-funded positions and see what those look like um. From that fifty thousand foot elevation. And what what can we fund? What? What do we need to do, get creative for? Um what's just a no go until twenty twenty six?
Right?
Okay. Any questions for me? I will put a resolution in front of the board um next week, um just to. Uh earmark those alternate dates, we cross our Ts.
Well, thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing it this early, which is.
Actually a little late.
Well, it's early for me.
The problem is, is when we go to December, then we have that last supplemental, that emergency situation and. It's a lot of tightness, so I'm, it pushes my, you know, January one workout.
Things start to move fast about August.
June, year.
July for you, yeah.
Yeah. And I will be you all calendars as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's now the hour of two o'clock.
Yes.
I believe I need to recess the board meeting. We have a board of health meetings from two to three and we'll be coming back. All right, those board meeting recess at three o'clock for for the presentations from. Watching Department official.
Thank you. Now you're a board of health member.
Right? I gotta recess this one, then we'll start with this one and.
I didn't even know when that happened, it's like, I know.
Yes.
Can I take one minute before we get started?
Absolutely.
I like coming down and meet people.
Yes, for sure, so.
If I can, one on one.
Yeah.
Instead of you sitting up here.
I was gonna actually ask them to introduce themselves, but.
Yeah.
For me, this is another time that I was, we we had.
That was good.
Yeah.
What's your name?
Sunday seven.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Hi.
Uh so Melissa and Julie are here from the Department of Health actually to support us. I was gonna introduce them as well, so.
So is that pretty normal? You guys get to sit in and just kind of, oh, what's going on? No, no, that's good. They have the communication.
They, I think they've been here, this is your third Board of Health that you've come in person for, so about once a year.
We have online members.
There was some people in line.
Yeah, yeah, so that looks, that's Nicole, she's from SWAT, she'll talk about the opioid dollars shortly. And Dr. Nicola, um who's our health officer, but we can, we can, I have all of those in my notes to go over for you all as well.
Sure. I enjoy people in person and meet people in person, I just guess I'm old fashioned.
Nope, that works for all of us, I think. Okay.
All right. Uh so I will say that um we do not, I don't know. Commissioner Zoller, if you're technically, you are the chair until we go other ways.
Sure. Um so we'll have to do an election of members, so I will open uh the Quiky Tech County Board of Health. For January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Um. That was called the order. Approval, so we're not gonna do elections yet, right?
Nope, approval of the agenda.
So I'd ask for a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Well, second.
A motion in the second, all those in favor?
Alright.
Adoption of the meeting minutes. You have a motion?
I move, I move to uh adopt the meeting minutes for the for last meeting. Meeting on November fifth.
In a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, so we are at election of officers.
So the RCW requires that annually we elect a chair. It does not require us to elect any other positions to the board. Uh historically, that has been the chair, that is the chair of the Board of Commissioners is also the chair of the Board of Health. Um if you will feel differently about that, you're welcome to have that discussion, obviously. Uh but otherwise, we do need to have a motion and a second for who will be the chair for twenty twenty five.
I would motion that uh Ron Ired, our current county chair, become the chair of the Board of Health.
Same.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
I, I, no discussion.
I didn't give you that, Jim, right?
I love this place.
See what happens when you're not here sometime.
Yes, thank you for that. Um and so then I did want to do a, it's not. Quite on the agenda, but before we get moving, I did want to have everyone introduce themselves. The five-member board came about during uh. Within the last five years, that's different. Um we do have their specific. Uh metrics that people have to meet to actually sit on our board. Um it can't be anyone from the community. Um and so I was gonna ask Sunday Apologist to briefly introduce themselves to you all, just as a point of um kind of understanding who's on our Board of Health.
My name is Sunday Sutton. Do you want to be shown already?
Sure, okay.
I am a coalition coordinator for uh Coalition Prevention of Use from Quiky Tech County, which um. Is uh centered out of Goldendale. I work under Washington Board Action Program.
I'm Spalding, we're a retired physician assistant, also picked up a master's in public health. Thirty years ago, um I retired from one community health where La Clinica del Carino. Um formerly I worked at Yakima Valley Farm and Fish Clinic in Topnish, Washington. For that, other places, mostly with migrant community health centers as a primary care provider. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I I'd like to add, I. I'd also like to add that I'm a substance use disorder professional. I've worked in that field for twenty years.
Kind of give a little bit of my background. When I served as commissioner before, we had a health district. Escalating in Clark County. So that's kind of was my involvement, not so much whole department, it's the district. So we went to. Clark County, that's what our meetings were. Every month. At squirrel, a city representative. This is gonna be a little change for me, which. Doesn't mean it's good or bad or indifferent, but. It'll change.
Um and then briefly, I just, I know they already introduced themselves, but Melissa and Julie, I'm grateful that they're here. So Department of Health has. Um a regional structure, so we're in region three, that's the Southport region, it's made up of eight counties. Um and they're really our liaison to the Department of Health, so Melissa's the deputy director for the regional areas. Um Julie's actually just joining us as a region three, so this is her first trip uh for Board of Health. Um I believe you have. You have met Lori at one point, so you guys have that connection, so she is connected to this county, which is nice. They have been invaluable to us in the last couple of years as far as Department of Health can be really challenging to navigate. And being able to reach out to them and just say, can you please help me with this? And they've really been mountains for us. We're really grateful that they can continue to support us. Um I believe we may online have our regional health officer who's Alice Ten, so if she's available, she could introduce herself really quick. If not, she can want a different one. See anybody raising their hand. Um anyway, so that was just a quick introduction, so and then I, we can move on our agenda from there. Unless anybody has any questions.
Um Dr.
He's, yeah, he's next, yeah.
Yeah, to tell the health officer update.
Yep, so that's Dr. Nicola.
Good afternoon. Uh my name is Joel McCullough, I've been the health officer for about, for about two years and um. And my previous experience here in Washington State was the health officer for uh the Spokane Regional Health District. Um so today I'll cover three topics. Let you know where we are with respiratory virus season. Uh give you an update on bird flu and talk a little bit about the duties of a local health officer, which is obviously my position. Uh so first of all, in terms of the respiratory virus season. Um according to the Washington State Respiratory uh uh virus da- dashboard. Uh two of the three main viruses that we monitor for uh COVID and RSV are not elevated at this time. We are seeing an update, an uptick in the uh number of cases of influenza. Um but the levels at this point are not impacting the healthcare system significantly. Uh as always, the best way to prevent hospitalization and severe illness is to get a uh. Just to get vaccinated against these various uh infections. Um of follow up with bird flu, um. As you know, bird flu is caused by infection of uh bird flu influenza type A viruses. Uh the current strain of uh bird flu have been circulating in the United States since January of of twenty twenty two. And it's been detected in Washington State since May of twenty twenty two. Uh the first uh human cases of bird flu was detected in October of last year. And these were agricultural workers who tested positive after working and working with infected poultry. At a uh commercial farm in Frank- in Franklin County. So for Washington State, the current number are eleven confirmed cases. And three probable cases, and these are from those agricultural workers and. And these are from those agricultural workers in Franklin County. When we look at the US, the total number of cases that are, at this time is sixty-seven confirmed cases. And we've, so far, we've had one death in the United States of one person who lives in Louisiana. And the, the methods for detecting bird flu is evolving. So CDC just put out guidance last week to increase testing and severely, severely ill patients and hospitalized patients. So, so that information is evolving and we will hopefully continue to detect more cases as the surveillance improves. Finally, any questions about the infectious diseases before I talk about the Health Officer duties?
I, I have one question.
Okay.
Compared to the number of cases in the US, which is sixty-seven, and Washington State currently has eleven of those.
Yes.
That seems like a pretty disproportionate amount in Washington State. And I'm wondering, is there cause or reason for that? Are there things that are being addressed to minimize that?
Yes, the number has to do with, there's this one specific workplace that was, we see the infections in Washington State. So it wasn't sporadic throughout the state. It was only one workplace. And I think a common issue with Washington State and the other cases, there've been like challenges with the, with the protective equipment. So the workers were, may not have been wearing the protective equipment properly to protect themselves from, from the, from the infection. So I think California is currently the leading number of cases. And it seems like it's kind of sporadic in terms of, has to do with the number of workers in a specific workplace and, and the infection that's, that's going on. The, so it's, so this was a cultural, a commercial poultry operation. And where it's, there's more workers and it's easier to become infected versus some of the other infections in different states I've been in. And dairy operations were, it's, it's, it's not as, it's, it's more difficult to catch it because it's, it's not in, in the air as much as it would be in a poultry operation. Does that answer the question, or?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure. So finally, a few words about the local health officer and the duties thereof. The Health Officer is defined in Washington State statute. And, and there's a specific RCW that defines the specific duties and responsibilities of the Health Officer. And most of the duties are fairly gen, are fairly general. I'll go over a couple of them, just so that you have an idea about what, what that includes. So one of the main ones would be to enforce the public health statutes of the state and the rule, and rules of the State Board of Health and the Secretary of Health and all the local rules of, of, of health. The second one is take such as, such actions as necessary to maintain the health and sanitation of the population. Also, an important one would be to control and prevent the spread of dangerous, contagious and infectious diseases. And so it kind of, it's in that vein in terms of preventing the spread of diseases and control, health, health and promote the public health. The, like, like I mentioned earlier, the, most of the duties are very specific, except for the, there's one specific RC, RCW that mentions the, the local health officer has the ability to grant waivers for onsite search assistance under, under specific requirements. So that's the only specific one, RCW, that talks about a specific role. But the other roles and responsibilities are pretty general. So have, so the health officer, health officer have very broad duties to, to protect the health of, of the local population and to promote, and promote the health of the population. So in summary, that's kind of, that's basically the, the duties of the Health Officer. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see Dr. Ten is on, so maybe Dr. Ten, do you mind introducing yourself as the Regional Health Officer?
Uh, sure. Hi. Hello, everyone. Sorry, I was a few minutes later. I was just coming from a different meeting, but my name is Alice Ten. I'm a family medicine doctor. I'm currently practicing in Seattle and King County. I am coming on board with the Washington State Department of Health as one of the Regional Medical Officers. And, and I'm really excited to be part of this meeting today, just to learn a little bit about everything that's going on in Quikitac County. Sorry that I can't be there in prison today, but I'm really excited to learn more about the county and see how the state can continue to bring resources and partner with everyone here to, as Dr. McCullough was just saying, really promote the health of the population in Quikitac. But thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
So in the event that Dr. McCullough was maybe on vacation, then Dr. Ten would potentially support us if we needed something while he was on vacation. So that's kind of how, yeah, so we have, we have backup plans, which is good.
Yes, that is one of the, one of the roles of the Regional Medical Officer. So I look forward to working with you all if the need arises. But I'm, know you're in very, very capable hands with Dr. McCullough.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Seen Elizabeth.
She on there? There's this, okay.
So next items, the FPHS presentation.
So Elizabeth will.
I seen Elizabeth there.
Tell us all about, so Elizabeth's our Fiscal Manager for Public Health, so she's gonna give us our update on the public health scene.
So, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I'm the Fiscal Division Manager for the Health Department. And a lot of what I do is grant management. And one of our main funding sources is through the FPHS grant, which is foundational public health services. And basically, that funding supplements and fills in the gaps of our other funding sources in order to perform the necessary services for individuals in the community. The funding for the foundational public health services allows the Health Department to provide core services in areas such as communicable disease, environmental health, chronic diseases, and maternal-child family health. It also helps us in promoting foundational capabilities, which that refers to fiscal management, leadership capabilities, evaluating programs, improving policies and processes. And it allows for workforce development, which has helped us in recruitment and retention of staff and provided trainings and continuing education. This past year, we were able to hire a health educator with that funding. And this year, we'll be able to use it for completing our community health assessment. And as far as numbers go, if you're interested in that, most of what we spent last year was for environmental health, which was thirty-four, thirty-seven percent of our spending, and then foundational capabilities, which was thirty percent. The remainder of the funding that was used was for communicable disease, maternal-child family health, chronic disease injury, and violence prevention, and access and linkage with medical, oral, and behavioral health. So FPHS funding is vital for us for promoting and providing these foundational public health services. And that's that.
It is. Do you have a question about any of that? I just wanted to give an overview quickly of like where our basic funding comes from and how that's structured. And, and obviously she gave examples of how we've used it, so.
So with the state's financials concerns.
Correct.
How could that affect our local health?
So, and I don't know the percentages, so if anybody in the room knows the answer, please raise your hand. There is quite a significant amount of that money that's actually written into the legislators, legislature. So it's just, it goes to public health. So I, my understanding is they would actually have to do a bill to change part of that funding. So in theory, our funding should not change. I do expect that it's going to. I expect that we're about to not be the, you know, we're not supposed, we're not gonna be as well-funded as we have been the last few years. And we're planning for that and trying to be strategic about our decisions until then, so. Do you have a different?
I, I think we don't have at this point. So, you know, government provision, precious budget, which does significantly focus on efficiencies in government, which will mean that we'll have to cut costs. But there, it has to go through the process before we. There is a steering committee that is doing process for foundational public health services dollars between sovereign private government and AIHC, represents some of that, our kind of health, local health. And so I think the, and the state board of health, so it'll be a conversation that is ongoing and won't affect any immediate funding, but the proposed budget.
Thank you.
I have no concerns, at least until the end of June. Like, we're good until then, and then we'll kind of see where we go from then.
Yeah, and I understand. No one has crystal ball, you know, some get, when they call, where they wanna cut across the board flat amount versus, is it department by department? Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Elizabeth.
And then I had invite, I'm not seeing his name, simply Alan Martinez. I don't know if he's here.
The next was the, yeah, BA presentation. Then we can go on and then come back.
Yeah. I, I'll just briefly kind of give you what he was gonna talk about today, so, and he might have to come back after a different day if he didn't make it. But probably a year ago, so Alan Martinez is from the Veterans Administration in the Vancouver area. He had asked, he was looking for a place to sit in Quikitac County. They wanted to have a representative here. He was specifically here to work with homeless veterans and connect them with housing. Anyway, I gave him a desk, cuz I did, I just gave him a desk in public health. It's a longer story than that. So he sits in my office one day a month and meets with local, other local agencies and tries to connect with any homeless veterans who have housing needs. Originally, he was gonna sit in behavioral health, but I put him in public health because it's next door to Frank, so that he and Frank can work together. He is not a service officer, so he's not doing Frank's job. They're doing two very different. So he can identify that someone needs services, then they would have to go to Frank to sign up for them. So I was gonna just kind of have him give an update, if he pops on later he can, about, just since he's been here for a year now, kind of what his perception and his challenges with the county, so that's the, that was all about.
Okay. Now, we'll go over the PH.
Yes, so I will do my disclaimer. Behavioral health does not insert to the Board of Health. However, we felt as a board that it was important for behavioral health to have, for the Board of Health to have an update, as behavioral health is a public health emergency at this point, especially in this county. So while this board does not make any decisions specifically about behavioral health or impact any of the fee schedules or rules or laws, we felt this was an important venue to give an update. So unless the board feels differently, I'm just gonna keep doing an update every month, or at every, at every Board of Health, so. So for behavioral health, I gave you some of this information this morning, but I'll go over it again. We currently have five full-time staff. I have four contractors and one consultant. We're interviewing for behavioral health manager in the next couple of weeks. We're busy right now going through an electronic medical record implementation for substance use. We're now taking referrals from adult probation, Department of Corrections, the crisis program, and juvenile. I will reiterate again, we have four positions. We have four positions that are open right now that we have not been able to fill. The crisis case manager position's been open for approximately a year. The mental health therapist position has been open for, since October. And the STD peer position has been open for about a year. We are not getting applicants for these positions, and so until we have applications, we will not be expanding our programming because we don't have the staff. My crisis team provides twenty-four seven crisis response. We respond to the hospitals, we respond to the schools, and we respond to the jail. We do not respond in the communities. So I think it's important for people to remember that. The designated crisis responders are really responsible for evaluating people for immediate safety planning or potentially inpatient placement in a psychiatric facility. In order to be a DCR, just as a point of education quickly for the board, you have to actually be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. I do have two new DCRs on staff. Once they complete their onboarding and privileging process, then we will give you a resolution that will appoint them stating that they, they can do that work in this county, so. And at that time, I'll bring RCWs with me for that. So in my morning update this morning, I provided the statistics around the crisis response. You should have had that in your packet. While we acknowledge that our January numbers, December and January, so December of twenty-four and January of twenty-five are very similar to the numbers that we saw in December of twenty-three and January of twenty-four. My staff very much relayed to me that while the numbers are similar, they all felt the intensity, the severely mental, the severe mental illness that the clients they're seeing now is becoming worse and worse. So even though the workload hasn't changed, they feel like the intensity of the work they're doing has become much more intense. So they're keeping an eye on the factors that did play into that. Any questions about? Oh, I did have one more thing. I apologize. And then this morning, we talked to about nine eight eight, and I brought you the numbers. We already.
Oh, good, ask him.
I have.
How many people use?
I have a statistics problem, so I have them. So I think this shows the nine eight eight calls that we've had. I have a hard time, I don't own this data. It's hard for me to get this data. So far, I've only been able to get July, August, and September from nine eight eight. So as I get more of that data, I certainly would update you on that as well. We, there is data pre-July, but the nine eight eight data wasn't geolocated. So if you called nine eight eight in like March, and my cell phone's from Virginia, it would show my call as being from Virginia, not from Quikitac County. So starting in July, they geolocated it. So if you have a Virginia phone number and you call from this county, it counts as Quikitac County. So probably won't ever ask for the data from before July, so just July forward. It will be, we know that that data is for Quikitac County residents, so.
Great idea.
Yeah.
So you know they're here.
Yes, yeah, so starting in July, we did, so. So that's the nine eight eight, the crisis line on the left. That's the one eight hundred number I spoke with you about this morning. Obviously, we don't get a lot of calls. We don't get a lot of referrals that way. The professional line is used for therapists, ER providers, law enforcement. So you can see the calls that they get don't necessarily line up with our crisis numbers. And I think that's, you know, a lot of times someone can call and just ask for information. The crisis line can sometimes for, provide resources and management where they don't even call us. So I think that the fact that those numbers are actually higher than the numbers that I have, that I see of people in crisis is, is positive. It means people are being able to get their needs met before they actually are in a crisis situation. Yes.
I just, I have a question for you. You mentioned jail, hospital, schools. What about a clinic? Can a clinic call in, receive, or do they have to refer to the hospital?
They have to refer to the hospital.
Okay.
Because there's a component of medical clearance that has to be done. Yeah, generally, yeah.
Thank you.
It was determined that we go into the schools, because a lot of times in a school, they could do a safety plan and trying to minimize any additional trauma to the student, so they felt like. So they felt like showing up where they were at was important, but, um, and then generally in the jail, they'll have to get medical clearance as well, so they'll end up. If they're unable to safety plan them, that will end up.
Thank you.
O S S.
Can I, the, the nine, where, where, where do those calls go to, who, who's taking those, where are they? Are they, do they work from home, do they work?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get you that information, I believe. So it depends what part of the state it, you're in, it depends who answers the phone call, I believe ours are answered by the Volunteers of America. And I'm not sure where they're located, Crisis Connections, who does our one eight hundred line, does not pick up our nine eight eight calls. That I'm aware of, they're in Vancouver. Um, unless, do you guys know Volunteers of Amer- yeah, I don't, I don't know where they're, I can find out though.
Gosh.
I, it's a good question, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, it could be anywhere. United States, right?
I will find out.
Uh, you can also, someone.
I think there's a lot of churn in the state about who, as the nine eight eight progresses and as it's, you know, uh, more prevalent in twenty twenty-six. There's a lot of conversation about who is going to answer the phone. Um, and so that, that's kind of in the background with the H C A, that they're doing a lot of conversations about that, as far as I know, at this time, it's Volunteers of America. That could even change in the next six months.
Thank you. Okay. O S S code update.
Yeah, so David should be able to join to give the onsite septic.
Yeah, I'm here. I think, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, so, the, I think in your packet, there's a two-page, um. Handout there for key draft changes for the onsite code. Uh, the original C R one-on-one was filed in two thousand eighteen, so it kind of gives you a little bit of perspective on how long we've been in this process at the state and the local health. Uh, level to adopt the new onsite code. Uh, but I just wanted to go over this briefly, because the code itself is, is really long, obviously, and there's a lot of language in there, and I do have some summary reports. And the actual draft language available, if you are interested in the details of it. Uh, but I thought I would just cover a couple sections here. Um, beginning in twenty twenty-seven, one of the biggest pieces is the property transfer inspections, uh, where. Uh, basically, the onsite must be inspected when the property is sold, or. The deed is transferred. They have given us some language. In there to, like, a. A timeline that we can adopt internally over policy, so I don't think that's gonna be. A huge challenge for us, but it is something new, and so homeowners, um. Or places that have an onsite septic system. When they transfer, they'll have to complete that inspection, and then obviously file it with us and have it available, uh, at the time of, uh, sale. Um, so we, we'll be discussing how long that, uh, that timeline will be. Uh, internally, we've, we've got the code language adopted, uh, or drafted, um. And then we'll have to, once that's all approved, adopt some new policies to manage that. Piece of the property transfer inspection. And then we might be looking at some, uh, software upgrades within Smart Gov to, uh, make that happen. Do you have any questions on that first piece?
So. We will do the inspection.
Uh, no, so our plan is actually to be, um, hiring a third party, or licensing and managing third parties to conduct that, those pieces. Uh, simply because of how much. Uh, properties are actually sold and transferred in the county, we would not be able to do that internally.
Correct, and the only reason I ask, there's a lot of different houses where I've had a septic system, you try to go ahead and have them. Pump before you sell them, sell it just. So you're staying a step ahead, but this sounds like it's getting the next step.
Yeah, so I think the R C W for realtors just requires it to be pumped, I'd have to verify that language, um.
Yeah.
Just the tank, but obviously, there's a lot of different systems that have. Settling tanks, pump tanks, aeration tanks, there's a lot of different types of systems out there, so this will cover. Those more complex systems, and then it will also. Um. You know, allow some validity into that transfer of sale and the subject system working. Um, and it'll also shed some light on any systems that have been. Uh, failing recently, or have not been, you know, maintained very well.
This is interesting, cuz it, it will take some time.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we have, we have, you know, two years to figure out how we're going to implement it.
Okay, good.
I mean, this doesn't come, the property transfer inspection doesn't start till February first, twenty twenty-seven, so. We'll have some internal discussions on that section, how we want to handle it internally.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Lately, the new board says, well, we've been holding on to this till the new board comes in.
Yeah.
Can you make a decision tomorrow on this, it's like, wow.
He's writing that tea today.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah, the only, um, the bigger, the other piece is, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot to the code, but I think a big piece. Uh, for Clickatet County is there's some new language on minor repairs. And repairs. Uh, their previous code. Didn't really touch on how you would or couldn't, um. Permit repairs. Uh, we've been pretty lax on that side. Uh, because we don't want to create any kind of, um, large financial burden on the, on the homeowner, or gonna get in, in between those, um. The cost, we don't want to get into the cost of things. So this next part, uh, where they talk about minor repairs and they clarify permits that are not needed for some repairs is really nice. So that means that there won't be any overregulation on. Requiring a permit for risers on the tank, or requiring a permit for D boxes, or lids, or fittings, pumps. Um, floats, you know, et cetera, those kind of. Pieces of a system in the operation. Uh, it'll just be able to. Uh, make sure that we're not putting that, uh, and then. It also has some language in there about the L H O or L H J. Allowing the least expensive repair or replacement of an O S S that meets the same rule requirements, so you can't. You know, if I had a gravity system before, um. And they, they have to repair or replace it, uh, then they could choose as a homeowner to choose the option of doing a. Um. Gravity system again. Um, unless, uh, we evaluate the site for some type of other system. Um.
I think Sunday had a question about the property transfers still.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed ya.
Uh, no, that's okay, uh. A lot happening, um, my, on the, um, upgrading of the. The sewage system. The additional cost, you said it's gonna have, uh. Upgrades on software that's needed, and then also the hiring of a, uh, to manage and license someone to do that. Um, are, have you looked at, as, are those costs gonna be able to be absorbed, or are there gonna be additional costs to that?
Um, well, we won't be. Maybe I misspoke, but we won't be hiring anyone to review the, that process, we're gonna be able to internally review third parties. That will be licensed and permitted to perform those functions. Um, now, there will probably be some additional costs in Smart Gov, uh, for tracking. Uh, because we do want a public portal, uh, so that. We can reduce the time and cost on property. Um, well, on the, the overall process, if you can do a property transfer inspection and then upload it to that portal. And then anyone can go look at that parcel number and see what's been done in the last. Year, or what kind of maintenance has been done on the, on the property, so that's our goal with the portal piece. That'll also cut down how much time we spend on, um. Records requests, uh, from realtors and, and other entities on, uh, what is permitted out here, or. You know, does this site have an ads built or what, so that's the goal of that, that piece.
Thank you for that clarification.
And we haven't really looked at the, the overall cost of that, because Smart Gov is shared by, um, multiple departments, so. Okay. Um, so we don't really need to worry about remediation, that clause just allows us to adopt policies, uh, for remediation, we haven't done that historically. Uh, but it's there so that it allows O H Os to do that. Um, the other big piece is on page two. This'll play, this'll probably have the largest impact on land development. They have increased the minimum land lot sizes. Um, mainly by drinking water supply, so whether or not you're on a public water system or your own new and private well. Um. They've increased it by five hundred, two thousand square feet, depending on soil type, uh, so. Most of the county is in soil types four through six, obviously, there's gonna be pockets of different areas that might be in a different soil type. But we're looking at that minimum. Land area i- increasing from, uh, you know, twenty thousand square foot, if you're on a, a public water supply to twenty-one thousand. Uh, and then the next piece of that land development is the minimum usable land area. So they've. Defined usable land area as, uh, it, you know, can't be underwater, uh, not paved or impacted by an easement. Uh, or otherwise, you know, usable, uh, for either the, you know, the dispersal area or the drain field, so. Uh, it can't have anything there that would impact it, and that, um. I think it's really important, cuz we do have some lots that. Are small and big houses are built on them. Uh, and then five years later, there's a large deck or concrete patio, or, you know, a number of different things are added. Uh, that would impact the homeowner's ability to do a replacement system. Or would impact the initial system, causing a repair and, uh, you know, additional permitting and installations of. Um, and then the next few sections. Aren't really viable to us, the field verification of proprietary treatment products. Uh, that's in the code, so that if there's any new products, it allows, um. L H J's to, to provide some, uh, impact on the efficacy of, of, well. It allows L H J to review the impact and the efficiency of certain proprietary products. Uh, but it's not getting rid of the, oh, the state's ability to, to approve those systems overall for the use in the state, so. Um. And then there was a. Clause about the product supply chain, that's also on the state level, we don't do it that locally. Uh, and then one big piece that's coming is, uh, what they've kind of called, uh, septic resilience. Uh, so different areas of the state are looking at different, um, possible, um. Going column. Uh, I don't know how to maybe explain them, but like. We're looking, they're looking at sea level rise in, uh, Puget Sound area. Uh, they're also looking at phosphorus as a contaminant from, uh, wastewater, uh, so looking at. Possibility of requiring reductions on those. And then nitrogen-based, uh, reduction is, is been overhauled, uh, it used to be. A pretty lengthy and misunderstood process in the old code, uh, but now they've simplified it, so. You, if you have nitrogen reduction systems, uh, it makes it easier to. Meet the method or the second method of land development and, uh. You know, go through that development process. Um. So that's the summary I have. Right now on the key pieces, but like I said, there's a lot of code language in there, and I do have. A draft of summary changes, and I actually do have a draft of the local code. To adopt the state code. That has been reviewed by, uh, the state and our. Uh, P A's office, uh, as the form, so we're moving quite along with it, we don't really have to do anything until April. Uh, locally, um, so. If there's any questions. Uh, go ahead.
But, David, can I just clarify, we have to adopt the code this spring, but we don't have to do a lot of the implementation for two more years. If that makes sense, is that correct?
Uh, no, so the, the property transfer inspections. Is twenty twenty-seven. The maintenance provider language is February first, twenty twenty-five, so this all goes in, this is all state. At the state level, and then we have to adopt the similar code language. Um, shortly after April first, as in their code, uh, starts April first, so. There's gonna be a lapse of time when the state adopts it officially, and then implements it, and it becomes effective, and then we have to adopt it after.
That'll go to planning? And they would look at it? Or no?
Kind of clear to us. For help. I assume. I'm glad we don't have to make a decision today.
No, no decision-making today, I just wanted to get it on your radar.
No. Yeah, I'd like to get a. Copy of what we have in our revision somehow, or if you, you have a copy of.
We can get it too.
I, I would really like to see it, cuz this is something we're gonna have partnership with. People without, within the community, especially realtors, uh. I know a lot of realtors just say this one needs to be done, my son of a house anyhow. But if there's repairs and stuff beyond. I, I think it's good, we start communicating then.
We'll get, we'll get both copies over to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Here's the guy.
Very. This is pretty much showing, we have to be on this board.
Oh.
So far, yeah.
Well, I think it falls in the next item, which is public ass, access to the board.
Is that a public comment?
Correct.
Okay. Open for. Thank you for clarifying. Open for public comment? At this time?
Open public, we have Mr. Smith. He's hiding back.
No, the nice ladies are hiding.
Yeah, appreciate you clarifying. Was there anybody online? That has a comment? To the board of health? Okay, don't see anybody, I'll ask one more time. Anybody in the meeting or out, online, that has a comment?
So if we do implement this. Who's gonna? See in the future to make sure it's going forward? We, we're gonna watch this or develop a program.
The, the health departments.
Department.
Just the health department and stuff. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This isn't gonna be, uh, we're in there, sore, and actually it falls down.
No, I don't think we have a choice, not to.
No, no choice.
Thanks for the question. I don't see anybody online. So.
Wouldn't they enclose public comment yet?
If anything you, yes.
Since they had a, since a public comment discussed.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so, uh, our last board health meeting, I. I addressed, um, to this board, that I really feel that, um. That. When we're, we're the board of health, and I feel like we should be addressing more. Other concerns within our community and within the county, as, uh, Aaron mentioned earlier, we're in a behavioral health crisis in this county, and we're, I don't. I don't hear us addressing those issues that I, and there are other issues within our county that I think that we. It, it, it needs to be on our table or in our agenda or something, and, uh, Aaron had mentioned, uh, a strategic plan, developing a strategic plan, which I think is great, but I just want to put it. On the radar that we are the board of health of Clickatet County, and that, that encompasses. All of the wellness of our county, and that is many different aspects that it covers, and I. I get, uh, you know, I'm. I'm just learning this position, I know I've sat in this chair for a while, but I'm just learning this position, and I'm just, um, expressing. What I feel, um, is viable as what this board can do, at, at least in looking at the disparities, um, in our county.
And. Maybe one of the ideas. Maybe one of the items. If it's done first, the community needs assessment. First, well, then and turn. Tell us the direction or things we may want to take up and focus on today and correct me if I'm wrong, please, uh, I'm, I'm happy, I just dealt with the. With that from the hospital being on the hospital board. The community needs assessment, but I think that's a good point. See what that brings and then add to that and then have discussion. And I may be wrong, uh, I'm always. Feel free to correct me if I'm going wrong angle here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think those are wrong or right. I just feel like that. That that needed to be heard, this is a new board.
Nope.
And, um, and I just want to make sure that we're moving forward in a direction that is helpful for our county and that we're addressing all the needs.
No, I just sitting last week, I heard a lot where there's a lot of needs, I. That's fair.
It's probably tough to not be. To be proactive in that, you know, so much of it is. Reactive, yeah, I mean, you, you're coming in and there's problem and it's, you ever seen it after it's grown? To a certain extent, so.
Yeah, then dealing with it after the fact.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's a lot more fun to think of ideas for the community that, that. Lead to a better direction beforehand.
Effect change that is, yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you. And I'm hoping if anybody has any more. Alright, because of all the business we need to attend to.
Um, so we do need to adjourn, but then, uh, Nicole and Ashley are here from Swatch to talk about the opioid dollars.
Yes.
Uh, we started that discussion this morning and it is, uh, it is a board of commissioners' decision, not a board of health's decision, but we're all here to listen.
Okay.
So we, I think we can adjourn and move over to them.
You have to adjourn with them.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn, uh?
I have to adjourn.
Thank you, move second to the discussion. Aaron Dunn, all those fans, Scott.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. If you're in order to help. We have a little bit of time.
So we have to swap.
Ashley.
Yeah, so I think you may have met Ashley on Friday at the CPAC leaders event, she was there and then Nicole's Swatch is an executive director, I'll let you, them introduce themselves, but they don't actually know, so this morning. Um, I did present to the board and gave them kind of a heads up of some of the things we've been talking about, so they have, you know, I'll let you give your presentation, but then they'll have questions for you all.
Good afternoon, uh, commissioners, thank you so much for having us today. Uh, my name is Nicole Peppers and I'm the executive director of the Southwest Washington Accountable Community of Health or Swatch. And I am joined by Ashley Gaffney, who you met on Friday. Um, we do have a presentation today and we'll go into it and I'm going to share some slides. Uh, but before I do that, I do want to note that I will have to get off at three oh five, but Ashley will be able to stay on and answer any further questions. And I'll go ahead and, um, have Ashley introduce herself too.
Thank you, Nicole, and to the board of commissioners for having Swatch here today. Uh, my name is Ashley Gaffney, I use Sheba pronouns and I am the director of community health improvement at Swatch.
Can you see a screen that has, um, a slide deck that says proposal for dispersment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. To introduce Swatch, for those of you that do not know, we are the accountable community of health that serves Clark, Skamania and Quick Attack Counties. We are one of nine ACHs in the state of Washington and accountable communities of health are, um. Are designed to support health equity, access and whole person care resources. By working with a variety of community organizations, community leaders, local health jurisdictions. And other organizations, um, whose work and mission support health equity and people's access, ability to access, um, their health needs. We are here today to speak about the opioid abatement funds, uh, that were, um, that were, uh, released to Washington State. And a proposal to help support Quick Attack County in accessing the funds, project management and dispersment of the funds for county, um, for the county. Ashley, I'll go ahead and turn this over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole. Um, so for the, uh, opioid funds, they are to be utilized. Um, for approved purposes and the participating counties do agree to undertake the following actions that are listed here. So developing a pathology for obtaining proposals, ensuring there's community input on priorities for funding. Uh, receiving and reviewing proposals, approving, denying proposals. Receiving funds from the trustee and distributing to the recipient and then lastly, reporting to the opioid abatement council. And making publicly available all decisions on the opioid fund allocation, application, distributions and expenditures. And so the next slide, Nicole, is, um. About project management and so Swatch is, um, intending to support Quick Attack County and its funds management process. By providing the following activities, working with the board of county commissioners, convening and facilitating an opioid abatement council. And supporting the opioid abatement council and performing in accordance with the M O U, managing funds. Dispersment to selected applicants and developing and maintaining a public webpage. Next slide, please. And our timeline and next steps, so the first step, um, is reviewing our proposal with. You all and then answering any questions that you have in, in regards to the proposal. Um, so taking the rest of January and February, uh, to answer any questions and I'll be available after this meeting to answer any questions you may have. Will include my contact information at the end of this as well. Um, and then in March, we would enter an M O U with Quick Attack County based on the proposal. Um, work on determining who the opioid abatement council, um, is going to be with the commissioners and health administrator. Um, and through April to May, um. So Swatch would be acting, um, as a facilitator for the opioid abatement council, uh, meetings and convening community engagements. With the opioid abatement council, um, June, releasing application for funds. Um, for the community to apply for, uh, funding and July, reviewing those applications, conducting follow-up interviews as needed. Um, August to notify the selected applicants and release communications. And then finally, September, providing ongoing support and reporting and annual updates. And the next slide, um, just it has some of the approved purposes per the M O U. Um, it is pretty lengthy and, um, this does not cover all of the, um, strategies that were put forth. But it does highlight some of them and so I just wanted to provide this slide here, um, so you can see what some of this could cover. Um, so to note, uh, treatment for the incarcerated population, prevention programs, pregnant and postpartum women. Uh, medication assisted treatment and other opioid related treatments. Um, expanding service programs, et cetera. And then the last slide has my, uh, contact information and I will be available to answer any questions following this. Uh, but feel free to reach out to me, that's my cell number and my email at any time if you have additional questions.
I, I appreciate it.
What, what is the warm hand program?
Apologies, I didn't quite hear the question, what was it?
The, there's a warm hand program that was on the last slide?
The warm handoff, so that when, when you're incarcerated, we make sure that you, when you need these services, we. We walk you to where you need to be.
Okay.
At least, that's, that's my understanding of warm handoff.
Yes, and it can also be with, um. Like peer-led organizations or other community-based organizations that focus, um, on, uh, re, opioid resource support, so like a warm handoff from one provider to another.
So when we have people in the jail who are voluntarily admitting themselves to it, to treatment post-jail. A lot of times, the recovery navigators will pick them up from jail and take them to recovery, would be an example of that.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, no, I see where it could be a good partnership, I love the public input. Circle around it. Focus.
Thank you, we also believe that's a critical part of this work and it is a requirement, um, under the, the, uh, M O U with the state.
Well, thank you. Good to see you last week, Ashley.
Yeah, you as well.
Would you play mail? Yes. Yeah, so I'm unfinished business.
For next week.
To make this decision for next week, yes, so any questions, reach out.
I'll pop up for that next week, just so I'm available.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be good, uh, let's get this moving.
I did hear one question this morning, um, I, I phoned in and listened to your meeting with Garrett. Director Quinn, thirty years this morning, and I heard one question saying, well, what actually? Does the local community receive, uh, wh, wh, what, what grants are applied for and, um, wh, what's the outcome of those grants? Uh, and I just wanted to point out that, uh, in a newspaper article, um, in June of last year, uh, with Wasco County. Essentially stated that the overdose, um, grants. Overdose prevention grants were available and in January eighth, uh, this is on the Columbia-Gorge News, uh, they overdose prevention grants are awarded. And they listed the organizations, the local organizations that were awarded, um, with four hundred eighty seven. Thousand, six hundred and six dollars for Wasco County. So I mean, there, there are some examples, I don't know if.
Yeah.
You haven't seen those or not yet, but there was, there was a, a question.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the follow. Thanks for serving.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're very grateful.
I, uh, would like to ask for if we could take a five minute recess. Let's break to seven minutes and come back to you. Call a meeting back, order. We have tight I T coming in to help.
Uh, actually Jen.
Oh, Jen.
Jen's pretty sorry. That's happening, this kind of stuff. Pucking up the computer and having to share with the screen. I know you've done this before, that's why I thought.
So should just.
Alright, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Alright. Presentation. Todd Jacobson, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Hey, are you ready for me?
Please.
Alright, well, good afternoon and thank you for having me, I appreciate the invitation. I've had a chance to, to chat with most of the commissioners quite a bit over the years and, uh, not so much with Commissioner Andrews, but. Got a chance to, to chat here briefly, so, yeah, thanks again. Uh, like Commissioner Ireak said, my name is Todd Jacobson, I am the Wildlife Conflict Specialist for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and I cover Clickatah and East Skamania Counties. Uh, up until last month, I did Clicktah, Skamania and Clark Counties, but we hired, um. Megan O'Connor here behind me and she, she now covers Clark and the west part of the, the district, so, uh, a little bit less ground for me to cover and more time to focus on Clickatah County. So you all invited me here today to talk a little bit about my role as the conflict specialist for Department of Fish and Wildlife specifically in Clickatah County, as well as to provide an update on wolf activity in the county. So a lot of hubbub about wolves recently and so that's a, it's a good thing to, good timing, good thing to talk about today, so. When I start off by just kind of providing you an overview of what my role is as the conflict specialist and what I do for members of the community here. Just to give you kind of a brief overview of the, the, the structure of Department of Fish and Wildlife and, and who, who's who and what we do. I know it can be confusing when working with a, a governmental organization, but we basically have four programs, wildlife program, fish program, habitat program and our enforcement program. And my role fits within the wildlife program and at the regional level, this is region five. Um, the staff members we have within the wildlife program include our district biologists. Those district biologists mainly work with game species, diversity species, in other words, species that are huntable, species that are not huntable, and they do a lot of. Population monitoring, that's kind of a, a very quick and brief overview of what they do, they do quite a bit more than that, but that's, that sums up the, the base of part of what they do. My job as the wildlife conflict specialist is to work with crop damage, uh, livestock conflicts, public safety, injured wildlife and public outreach regarding those topics. We have a private lands program and the private lands biologist works to enroll private landowners in public hunting access and maintain public hunting access for the hunting public. As well as to do habitat enhancement on private lands as well. And kind of the fourth area of our wildlife staff here in region five includes our wildlife areas and the, the, the main wildlife area in Clickatah County is the Clickatah Wildlife Area. There's a unit of the, the wildlife area up in the Simcos, the Simco unit east of Highway ninety seven, and then there's several chunks of W D F W wildlife area land, wow. Around, uh, the Clickatah corridor as well. And my job as the conflict specialist, there's one of me for Clickatah and East Skamania County. So what are my primary duties? So there's a lot of them, but I'll give you the, the short version here. My job is to work with private landowners in multiple different capacities and one of those includes working with private landowners to prevent, reduce, control. Deer, elk and turkey damage to crops and other private property damage. Another component of that is to work with private landowners to prevent, reduce and control livestock depredations by wild carnivores. Additionally, I work with our enforcement staff to address human public safety concerns and incidents related to wild carnivores as well. Or I suppose other, other animals, not necessarily carnivores, you know, could potentially be deer, elk that provide, whether they cause public safety concerns. I also respond to reports from the public of dead, dead, injured and trapped wildlife, um, Goldendale keeps me busy on that regard. Uh, when you have a lot of people, a lot of wildlife in the same area, there's always, um, all sorts of conflicts like that. I also do proactive education and outreach to the public, non-governmental organizations and other government groups such as, you know, board of commissioners like I'm here doing today. So just going to break those down a little bit more to give you a little bit more detail about how I interact with members of the public in those capacities. So as I mentioned, I work with private landowners to deal with, uh, deer, elk and turkey damage. I don't really get a whole lot of turkey damage complaints, um, maybe one or two a year. But mostly deer and, and primarily elk damage, um. Most of what I do in regards to crop damage is outlined in WAC two twenty, four forty, that's a chapter of WAC that. Kind of governs everything we do in the conflict program specific to crop damage. And my primary role is to work with commercial crop producers. There's a definition in that WAC of what constitutes a commercial crop producer. Uh, it has to do with the amount of pro, uh, crop that you produce and the amount of damage that you incur. But I also do wo, work with non-commercial producers and people who have residential nuisance, nuisance damage complaints as well. And people have wildlife concerns, um, and we still address them even though they're not, they don't, might not qualify as a commercial producer. And there are a lot of tools that we use, um, to, to handle those, those crop issues, those damage issues. We have what are called damage prevention cooperative agreements, those are agreements that the department, uh, negotiates between the department and commercial producers to address damage. It allows the producers to potentially file damage claims for their losses. It's an agreement that basically says, hey, the, the producer's going to do their part to help reduce damage and the department will work with them on those topics. Uh, we do cooperative fencing agreements as well, I have a couple, uh, fences. Uh we do cooperative fencing agreements as well. I have a couple uh fencing agreements here in Clickatat County, some in uh Skamania County and Underwood where the legislature provides fencing money to the department to partner with landowners um in situations where there's uh high levels of deer elk damage. So we fenced off several pieces of property with with high levels of damage, and uh I don't know what that the future of that looks like. Uh we're probably gonna continue to get fencing money from the legislature going forward, but every year we have a pot of money that we use until it's up to to fence off areas that were maybe other other non-lethal deterrent measures aren't aren't working to deter damage.
Is there a set amount for landowner?
Not necessarily, no. We we get a a pot of money statewide, and uh you know, we have six different regions in the state. And so we work with our Conflict Section to negotiate how much, you know, we kind of get in a queue of 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 uh to see who who all needs fencing money, and they kind of sometimes we need to prioritize that if there are a lot of needs, a lot of requests for fencing. But um this year, we got in the last biennium, I think we got one point two million from the legislature for fencing projects. When I first started, there was no money for fencing projects from the legislature. So it's whatever the legislature appropriates on a biennium for for fencing projects.
I've seen it work.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, it's the most effective.
Where they're having damage on dairy.
Mm-hmm.
Going into the feed.
Yeah.
And once they put the fence up, that basically stopped. I'm not saying they all won't go through the fence later on when it's older.
Yeah, and we have.
We've seen where there's money well spent.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and there's a fencing project going on in Trout Lake right now where uh the landowner's putting in uh the posts. He's working with DNR on some property boundary issues before it's completed. But yeah, we
Oh, okay.
If I have the money and I have the scenarios where it would be feasible, then I try to implement that wherever possible.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to disrupt.
No, no, ask questions as we go along. It's easier than trying to remember them to the end.
And the the fencing would mainly be to keep out?
To keep out deer or elk. Um so it's an exclusion fencing. Um we use uh eight-foot tall, well, the fences is, we have a a specific document that outlines the size of the fencing, but it has to be a minimum of eight foot tall.
Okay.
So I generally am using twelve-foot tall posts, um two four-foot sections of woven wire. And the way the cooperative fencing agreements work is that the department provides the materials and the landowner is responsible for the installation and maintenance and gates. And so it's a, that's why I call it a cooperative agreement. So the landowner has some ownership in it. The department provides funding as well. Those are generally well received. Uh we also use uh, you know, staff time and master hunters to help haze elk and deer off of areas as a as a non-lethal tool. Some commissioners may know about that.
I may have helped in the haze.
Yeah. And then in areas where non-lethal deterrents don't work, we sometimes use lethal removal as well. And that mainly focuses on using the members of the public to help um do lethal removal of deer or elk in those in those particular areas. And as I mentioned earlier, we have crop loss damage claims as well for areas where the hazing tools just don't seem to be working. The producer's losing an inordinate amount of damage. Um if you follow along the legislature, there was a bill passed last year that kind of refined our crop damage claim process. But um that's not something that uh folks tend to utilize a whole lot in this part of the state, but in other areas of the state, it's been used extensively. Uh shifting gears here a little bit, the second kind of main component of my job is to work with the private landowners on livestock depredation by carnivores. And one of the tricky things about this is that, you know, when a when a livestock producer finds a dead animal, they don't really know a lot of times what caused it. Sometimes it could be a natural cause of death. Sometimes it could be resulting from uh domestic animals that caused the problem, or, you know, a good portion of the time it is wildlife. So again, there's a whole section of WAC that outlines how we operate when in regards to uh livestock losses. Uh again, we we work, we don't just work with commercial livestock producers, um but we also work extensively with, for lack of a better term, hobby livestock owners, people who have uh animals as as pets or as a small farm operation that aren't really producing animals commercially. Uh by far, that's where most of our livestock issues originate, um especially as you get closer to Clark County. Obviously, probably ninety-five percent of our livestock depredations are on these smaller hobby operations instead of the commercial, larger commercial operations. Everyone has goats and sheep and opaches and llamas and small animals that, you know, roam around. So um ideally, I like to prevent depredation before they occur, and so I do as extensive amount of uh outreach, trying to prevent people from losing their livestock. I'd rather work with someone ahead of time than have to show up at their house to look at a dead goat and then have to work with them after that that goat is already dead and it's already too late at that point. But when we do get uh livestock losses, my job is to come in and do what's called a depredation investigation. And it's basically like a crime scene investigation. It's usually a a WDFW biologist myself, along with our enforcement officers if they're available. And we basically do a full necropsy of the carcass to determine the cause of death. And I do quite a few of those each year. I've had had extensive necropsy and depredation investigation training over the years. Uh again, the ideal way to prevent this, and this is what I try to uh convey to landowners, is to use uh proactive husbandry approaches. You know, uh nightpanning, other hazing things to keep carnivores away from livestock, but uh occasionally it does happen. And where livestock are killed by wild carnivores. And then there are there are non-lethal hazing measures that we can do after the fact, but then occasionally it does lead to lethal removal of that offending carnivore as well to prevent future losses. And like crop losses, there is a process for livestock producers to file livestock loss damage claims. There's quite a few more nuances was um involved in that depending on the species that was involved in the killing and the um the money that the legislature has appropriated. So the legislature appropriates substantial money to livestock producers for wolf losses for a variety of livestock species. Uh there's some cougar money for cougar depredations on livestock, but there are a lot more qualifications and that only applies to cattle, sheep, and horses on commercial operations. There's no money appropriated by the legislature for bear depredations on livestock, or coyote depredations, or eagle depredations. So it's kind of kind of odd. I wish there was a, you know, uniform um explanation that could tell the producer, but it all varies depending on on the circumstance. The third component of my job is to work with our enforcement staff on addressing human public safety concerns and incidents incidents related to carnivores. So that primarily involves bear, cougar, wolf. In other parts of the state where we have moose, uh moose are a big public safety issue, and so that factors in. We don't have any moose down here yet. So um that's not an issue. Uh with bear, the primary thing I deal with is human food attractant issues. I probably field between seventy-five to a hundred and fifty bear calls a year in the gorge with about ninety percent of those resulting in our our human food attractant issue. So we're talking garbage, bird feed, beehives, and uh chicken feed, chicken coops. Those are the, those are the primary issues. Um and then also cougar and wolf sightings as well, or and and then includes reported cougar and wolf sightings that may turn out to be a house cat or domestic dog or coyote or things like that. Like uh livestock depredations and everything else, I try to address a lot of this with proactive outreach. But uh there's a lot of people in the gorge, and it's hard to hard to reach everyone with the messaging. So I provide information resources on how to prevent some of these sort of conflicts and how what to do if you see a wolf or a cougar. Uh and then again, when we have especially the bear issues, my job is to work to address those attracting issues. And ninety-nine percent of the bear issues can be resolved by simply just addressing the attracting issue, removing the attracting, and the bear's gonna be on its way. There are options of non-lethal hazing, sometimes relocation, or lethal removal um of the wildlife species in question. It's just a kind of a collage of the different wildlife conflict things that I've dealt with related to this. These are all different food attracting issues, ways I've solved them. I solved most of my bear issues with either removing attractants or electric fencing for folks that just don't have the ability to remove that attractant. Dumpsters are a big issue in the county. Um you can't really just remove your dumpster. Uh the other big one is people in the county who don't have uh residential garbage pickup, right? They'll they'll store their garbage for several months and then make a a run to the dump, and that that becomes a problem because bears can find it. So I work uh extensively with with homeowners to try to cut that food source off before it becomes an attractant and a habituation issue for a bear. And it also a lot of times involves capturing wildlife, cougars, bobcats, bears, um you name it. I've probably captured it in one way, ship or another. Another part of my job that takes up quite a bit of time, it's not something that you think of normally, but it's all of the random wildlife calls. It don't fit into one of those categories. Lots of dead or injured wildlife, people have a dead deer in the yard, a deer tangled up in fencing, things like that. Uh we've unfortunately had a handful of wildlife disease outbreaks specifically in deer in Clickatat County. Um that's something that keeps us keeps us busy. Um it's a mainly a disease called adenovirus hemorrhagic disease. Um it's affected, we've had a few outbreaks in the last eight years. It's an unfortunate mm disease from an it's a non-native disease, it's not something that originated in the United States, but it's something that we deal with. Uh lots of injured raptors, injured deer, deer getting themselves tangled up in fencing, things like that. Um domestic dog attacks on deer, so we have deer that are injured that way, motor vehicle collisions, train strikes. All sorts of things. We have wildlife in these tricky scenarios that need help, stuck in all sorts of random scenarios. Orphaned wildlife as well, fall into that category. Uh it's just a little brief collage of random random wildlife things that I deal with. I had to catch a deer in Goldendale last month. They had a wire wrapped around its antler and around its neck, around its body. Landowners have rattlesnakes that get into their garage, and they're not comfortable removing them, so I can assist them with that as well. Deer tangled up in any number of things. Uh lots of stories, but anyway, just just kind of gi- give you a random or a a an idea of random different things that we have to uh run into. And one of the things that kind of makes us unique is that we have the ability to capture wildlife using immobilization chemicals and and dart guns. And so this is Megan and I, we were in Ridgefield the other day, having to capture a buck that was blind in both eyes and running in circles around people's yards. So uh we were able to use our uh immobilization equipment to capture the deer and assess it and decide what to do with that deer. Some of the equipment that we use when we do chemical immobilization, dart guns, transmitter darts. And then uh kind of the bring everything together, a good portion of my job is to do proactive education and outreach to the public and and different groups. So things like the Board of County Commissioners, non-governmental organizations, city and community councils, police jurisdictions. Uh Megan and I recently put on a training for the Camas Police Department on working on urban carnivore wildlife issues. We had a a bear running through Camas last year, and that kind of started that uh process. I give presentations to schools, FFA and four-H groups, different citizen groups, W two extension, conservation districts. And then I spend a ton of time working with landowners. We'll have sit-down dining room table meetings with landowners. Um if I can do it proactively, especially this, this really applies to the wolf issue, and I'll get to that here in a in a few minutes. But I spend quite a bit of time working with landowners on a one-on-one basis to develop relationships and address their wildlife concerns. Uh just to give you kind of a snapshot of what I do specifically in Clickatat County, what our main conflict issues are. That includes elk damage to hay, pasture, produce. Some of the larger orchards in the county have elk and deer damage. Uh wheat crops uh east of Highway ninety-seven primarily. I spend a lot of time working with producers on proactive wolf livestock meetings. Um I do livestock depredation investigations. Uh a lot, like I mentioned, lots of injured and tangled and sick deer and raptor calls. Uh orphan cougar issues. We've had to capture five different litters of orphan cougars in Clickatat County in the past two years. Bears and trash, chicken coop, bird feeder, that's a, that's pretty ubiquitous across the state, but I spend a substantial amount of time in Clickatat County dealing with that issue, and then outreach and education as well. So that's an overview of my job as the Wildlife Conflict Specialist and my role to work with landowners in Clickatat County. And the other part of my presentation delves into the uh a Clickatat County Wolf Update. Uh I know there's lots of information and misinformation floating around, and I would love to address that. So feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have any questions. There's been some recent developments with wolves, and um I wanted to tell the story and I couldn't figure out exactly where where to jump in and and just start this wolf thing. So I hope you don't mind. I start at the beginning, not at the very beginning, but I had to go backwards and to to give you the full picture and hopefully answer and address any questions you may have, but it all, it does all come together here. That picture is a trail camera capture that I I captured of the big muddy male wolf, and I'll talk about him in a minute. That's a Clickatat County photo, so.
Uh that's that's his name?
Uh it was his name.
Named after the big money?
Well, yeah, uh we gave uh back when the the big uh couple wolves decided, formed a pack in Clickatat County. We gave the Yakima Nation the option to to name the wolf pack because it was spending a substantial amount of time also on the Yakima Reservation, and they came up with the the Big Money Pack name. So every wolf that forms a, every time we get a wolf pack, we we name the wolf pack where we, you know, work with groups to to name the pack. Yeah. And so we're talking about a pack. We're talking about two or more individuals traveling together in a defined territory in winter. So we do our annual wolf report. Um we'll start it in January, and by usually we publish it in April, so we'll spend January, February, making sure we have all the packs kind of that we know of identified and defined, and then we'll name the packs um if they're still traveling together in in winter. Because that's when packs are more cohesive, they're in a smaller area. In the summer, wolves can kind of run around all over the place, and even a pack that we know about is fairly spread out. So winter is the the timeline when we us- usually refer to or use to identify a distinctive pack. There's another term I use called a successful breeding pair, and all of these definitions are in the two thousand eleven WDFW Wolf Plan. But when we say successful breeding pair, we're talking about a male and a female wolf that raised two or more pups until December thirty-first. And that is an important term when we're talking about wolf recovery, and I'll I'll that will, I have some slides about that here in just a few minutes. So just in case you hear those, that's what those terms mean. So uh this is where a lot of misinformation comes in, so I'll start uh with this little diagram here. How did wolves get to Washington? Okay, so uh in the nineteen nineties, we were getting scattered reports primarily in the North Cascades uh of wolves. These wolves were likely dispersing down from British Columbia, um some were coming in from northeast Washington. So at that time, in the early nineties, there were still wolves in Montana. Um this is prior to any wolf introductions that happened in in Montana or in in Yellowstone in Idaho. We were still getting verified reports of wolves in Washington, so they were here. I mean, they were extirpated, completely removed from Washington, and you know, by the mid part of the nineteen hundreds. But in the nineties, they were starting to show back up and pop up here and there, individuals at least, as far as we could tell. In nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, the federal government did wolf releases, and these are the, this is the main wolf release, the relocation that you hear about. Wolves were brought in to Yellowstone National Park and into central Idaho. And those wolves came from an area just outside of Jasper National Park near Hinton, Alberta. And at that time, there were already probably at least fifty wolves in northwestern Montana. They were already um the 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 state of Montana was aware of, they were involved in livestock depredation. So there were already wolves in Montana when those translocations, those releases occurred. Now, how did the wolves get to Washington? So easy enough. All I have to do is step across the line from Canada, come over from Idaho and Montana, come up from the Blues in Idaho and Oregon. So we have wolves that are coming into the state from existing packs outside of the state. And then once those wolves establish packs within, you know, the state of Washington, then we have lots of wolf movement all over the place. Um wolves disperse, that's what they do. A wolf pack is usually a male and a female. Their offspring maybe from the previous year, and then their offspring from that year. If you don't fall into one of those categories, you've got to go somewhere else. You got to form your own pack territory. Uh wolf packs are highly territorial in areas where there's no human disturbance. Let's take Yellowstone Park, for example. Uh wolf mortality is pretty high from other packs. They they patrol their territories. They don't let other packs infringe on their territories. If there's some sort of infringement, there's gonna be conflict and dead wolves from each, you know, to kill each other. There's a couple myths that float around a lot. I spend a lot of my time trying to address this. There's Canadian wolf myth. Yes, the wolves that were brought into Yellowstone and Idaho did come from Canada. But we were already getting wolf movement down from Canada, and it's not, you know, it's not like the wolves in Canada are different. They don't, you know, have a Canadian passport. They're just, they're just wolves, and I'll show you some diagrams here in a minute that really highlights how much wolves move. And really, if you look at the uh the geographic distance, Jasper National Park, the area where they caught these wolves, it's about three hundred miles straight line distance from northeast Washington. That's nothing for a wolf. I'll show you a couple wolf movements here where wolves are mov- were moving seven hundred, nine hundred miles from Washington State. We have, so that's something that is continually perpetuated. That the wolves that were brought in were different than the wolves that were here historically. I can spend hours talking about that and some of the flaws with early naturalists documenting wolves and wolf sizes and wolf subspecies, but it's all the same wolf. We're not talking about wolves that, you know, were brought down from the, you know, Yukon, Alaska, Arctic areas. These are wolves that well within dispersal distance uh of a a wolf. We just call them gray wolves. There's not anything different, a timber wolf or anything like that. Um just, they're just gray wolves. And another thing that comes up a lot is wolf releasing in Washington. There has been no release of wolves in Washington State. That doesn't mean that private landowners with like wolf-dog hybrids haven't turned individuals loose from time to time, just like, you know, how there's every uh uh Burmese pythons and the Everglades, people have these pets and they decide they can't take care of them, and they let them go. That's happened. That's happened pretty extensively, um, happened in the Gifford Pincho in the early nineties, this is before my time as a biologist. But yeah, there were wolf-dog hybrids that were released by private individuals, but there's been no release of wolves in Washington. Despite the myth that, that we use Schwan's trucks to move wolves around, that, that comes up a lot, believe it or not. Wolves don't need our help, they're, they're pretty good, uh, uh, getting around on their own. And you'll, I'll, I'll show you here some maps that kind of highlight that. Uh, this is another confusing thing with wolves is their status, what is their status? And uh, it keeps us on our toes because the status can periodically change depending on lawsuits and administrations, so. Right now I'm going to talk about their federal stats, so uh, with a lot of species, they have a federal status potentially and a state status. So this is their federal status. In two thousand eleven, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, as a result of a, a budget rider on a bill, uh, delisted wolves in the Rocky Mountain popu- population segment. And they define that Rocky Mountain population segment as, you know, Montana, Idaho, the eastern third of Washington and Oregon. I think maybe parts of Wyoming, so that's that yellow line you see on there, we are right there where that star is, that's approximately where Goldendale is. East of that yellow line is where they are federally delisted. Caveat that this could change tomorrow. Uh, if you ever pay attention to wolf news, uh, you know, a lot of times, like the US Fish and Wildlife Service will move to delist something. And there's a lawsuit that counteracts that, um, there's a book and I'll highlight that in a minute that kind of gives you the whole history of federal delisting. But wolves got de-listed as a budget rider, it was something that was tapped on to a, a budget process. Uh, and that's the, basically the only way they got de-listed, otherwise it was tied up in courts. So, in the western two-thirds, where we are at currently, wolves are federally listed as endangered. And that affords completely different protections than wolves that are federally delisted. Means when they're in danger, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, not state fish and wildlife, but the US Fish and Wildlife Service has management authority over federally endangered species. And a weird note in the history of wolf status, in January of twenty twenty-one, the federal government delisted wolves across the range in the lower forty-eight. Uh, oddly enough, there's, there's a population of wolves in, in the Midwest, the Minnesota, Wisconsin area. And they have about five thousand wolves, give or take, uh, quite a bit more than we have over here. And those wolves are also fall underneath this federal uh protection. So, but in January of twenty twenty-one, they, the, the federal government delisted wolves across the range, including Washington. But by February of the following year, a US District Judge overturned that delisting. So he spent all his time telling live- livestock producers, and hey, folks, wolves are federally delisted. And then, within a year later, they were also now they're federally listed again in the endangered part. The part, part where they were delisted, they still remain delisted, but uh, it's kind of confusing when things change. So, again, the status could change tomorrow if the, if the different presidential administrations, you know, or, or the US Fish and Wildlife Service decide to delist, so that, a lot of back and forth on that. Currently wolves are, the important takeaway is that wolves are still federally endangered where we're at here, in all of Clickcat County. Um, that line, that's a, that's a, there's a road boundary, I think that's highway ninety, three ninety-five near Benton County, at least in this part, in the south part. It's a different highways as you go further up the state. There are no federal wolf recovery requirements, there's no number where the feds could say, okay, if there are X amount of wolves, now they are federally delisted. There's no recovery requirements, it's, so, um, there's, again, I could, we could spend a couple hours talking about how or why wolves are de-listed or not de-listed on the federal level, but there's no, there's no set requirements, it's just whatever the administration decides and can get through. And this is an excerpt from, this is US Fish and Wildlife Service language about federally protected species. Any take which includes harassing, harming, pursuing, hunting, shooting, wounding, kill, trap, capture or collect, or to attempt to engage in any such conduct of wolves. And then, this is talking about where they're afforded federal protection, where they're federally endangered. Without a permit or other authorization is prohibited by federal law. Now, we do have, the Department of Fish and Wildlife does have an agreement and MOU with US Fish and Wildlife Service to allow wolf harassment and hazing in areas where it would potentially uh prevent livestock issues. So, that's something that we work with the US Fish and Wildlife Service on, but again, in general, you have to leave them alone. Unless there's imminent danger to a human being. And again, this is, this is federal language that I've got up here in, in red. Now let's transition to talking about the state status of wolves. Uh, these two things are independent of each other, so state could potentially change status or downlist wolves, but they could still be federally endangered. So it is, it is confusing, two different criteria. In two thousand eleven, Washington published their Wolf Management Plan, and in that plan, it is specifically outlined what wolf de- downlisting and delisting would look like. So, across the state, wolves are currently classified as endangered, they're state endangered as well as federally endangered, like we just talked about. In the eastern, or in the western two-thirds of the state. So, the kind of, the, the stair steps are, you know, something that's considered endangered, and then it's downlisted to threatened. And then it's downlisted to sensitive, and then eventually it's delisted, and sometimes you can skip those steps depending on, hey, if there's massive recovery, let's skip those steps. So, this excerpt is from that two thousand eleven Wolf Management Plan, it's available online, it's like a three hundred page document. But if you're bored one day and you want to read it, it is some pretty interesting reading. So, this is, the excerpt says, "The gray wolf will be considered for downlisting from state endangered to state threatened when six successful breeding pairs are present for three consecutive years with basically two successful breeding pairs in each region." The state is divi- divided into three wolf recovery regions, the eastern Washington region, the North Cascades region, and the South Cascades and Northwest Coast Recovery Region. We're in that third recovery region. Uh, the eastern region has definitely met those goals above and beyond. The North Cascades, I think, is also met those recovery goals. Not so in the South Cascades and Northwest Coast Recovery Region, we are at zero wolves currently in that area, period. And in the, in the wolf plan, it talks about how do you get from uh endangered to threatened, and how you get from threatened to sensitive. So, um, every five years, Department of Fish and Wildlife is required to do what's called a periodic status review of their endangered species. We do it for squirrels, we do it for spa, you know, frogs that are in danger, we do it for wolves. And so, this past year, we did a periodic status review for, for wolves, twenty twenty-four. In February twenty twenty-four, our Department of Biologists, in conjunction with the University of Washington, University of Washington did a substantial amount of population monitoring, uh, modeling for us and projections of what the population with wolf, of wolves would do. So based on that modeling, our biologists recommended, and our administration recommended to downlist wolves in Washington State from state endangered, skipping threatened all the way to state sensitive, we recommended downlisting. That decision went in front of our Fish and Wildlife Commission, who has the final say on Fish and Wildlife rules. So in July of twenty twenty-four, the WDFW Commission voted to redeem, retain the wolf status as state endangered.
So, I had seen that.
Mm-hmm.
And so then it question, you question, okay, we're following the science, staff recommended this. And the commission's like, no. So I'm confused. We have followed the science. And then all of a sudden the commission goes the other way, I, it's just me, I, I was confused, I've read it, you know, I, I, I heard comments coming to the commissioners last year. So I went back to look at, study it, and it just, and I'm not asking you to answer that. You're, you're, you can't speak for the commission, I, I, I get that. But I'm really confused when there's a science set up, staff recommends it, but it's not followed through by the commission.
And the nine.
Very confusing to me.
Yeah, I understand, and the, the nine-member uh commission is appointed by the governor and they, you know, they take a vote on most of these issues, and they, you know, have the, the flexibility to decide to take staff recommendations and implement them or not. And uh, I wasn't present at those meetings, but some of the objections that were raised by the commissioners, I think, uh, delved into uh accuracy of wolf counts, um, some of the ways that different tribes counted and reported wolf numbers, so the state counted and reported wolf numbers. Uh, you could probably look at recordings of those meetings if you haven't seen them.
I, I didn't go that far, which I'd like, uh, try to do that.
Yeah, I think it was the July twenty twenty-four meeting where they were, um, I think the, probably the meetings before then had some a lot of background and discussion, and it was July where that final decision was made, so you probably want to.
Yeah, I, I, I just, by doing research, it's like, I thought, following the science, and then it seemed to change, but that's just my per- what I perceive, that's.
Sure.
And I understand you don't control the commission. You don't appoint the commission.
So is every, everything making sense so far? And this is confusing, it's, I am aware of it because I live and breathe this every day, but again, if this is the first time you're hearing it, it's hard to keep track of what's going on, and then when things change at the federal level, it's hard, it's also hard for us to keep track, um. Things can change temporarily, and then a lawsuit reverses things or puts a stay on, huh, plan, so, uh. You can always give me a shout if you're ever confused, I'm happy to clarify things, so. Uh, another thing to pay attention to, our twenty twenty-four annual wolf report will come out in April of twenty-five. So, here in a couple months, once we've put together all of our data, um, we'll come out with our annual wolf report that provides a summary of the wolf packs in the state, it provides what's called a minimum count, and that's a thing that a lot of people get hung up on. Our biologists, our wolf biologists in particular, spend all winter coming up with what's called a minimum number. And that's the number that they can say, hey, we are sure, we're certain that there are at least this many wolves. A lot of people take that to imply a maximum number. Well, you can't ever know the maximum number of animals in an area, it's just impossible to sense us, something like that, um. We have a pretty good idea of what wolf stuff's going on, there's so much, you know, we do track survey, I'll get into that in a minute. But basically, don't get hung up on the number, it's a minimum, it's like, how many, we know that there are at least this many wolves based on pack compositions and loan dispersers. But there, we recognize that there are wolves that we are missing, it's probably not much different. You know, we're not talking about orders of magnitude difference, we, our wolf biologists do a pretty good job coming up with that minimum number, but just keep that in mind. It also uh details the number of depredations and types of depredation incidents that wolves were involved in in the state. The types of, the amount of lethal removal that the state has done in areas where the state has management authority, and again, that's the eastern third of Washington. Uh, I don't know these people, I don't get any commission from their books, however, I spend a lot of time in the car, driving around the county and the, the state, listening to audiobooks. These two books, more than any other books I think I've read, have shed a ton of light on wolf biology and management. I would highly recommend them, uh, Wolfer, this is a book by a guy named Carter Niemeyer, he worked for the federal government, basically in my same role as a, um, uh, Wildlife Conflict Specialist, he worked for uh USDA Wildlife Services, doing wolf depredation investigations back in this eighties and nineties, back when wolves were first starting to show back up in, in Montana. Uh, both of these wolves, or both of these books, Wolfer and American Wolf, provided a great history about wolves, wolf reconization, wolf management, wolf behavior. So I recommend these wherever I go, if you just want to learn more about wolves and how this, how we got to be where we're at today. A note on wolf population monitoring, how do we do this? Um, I have a YouTube link in the bottom, I probably won't show it today, it's an eight-minute video that our, our staff produced. It's uh, uh, some, a professional film company put it together, it's called How to Count a Wolf, it's on YouTube, look it up, it's a phenomenal overview of how our wolf biologists count wolves every year for our annual population survey. So, how do you, how do you know how many wolves are in the state? Well, first we use reports from the public, we have a whole public page where members of the public can report wolf sightings. Uh, I'll show you an excerpt from that here in just a minute. Um, there's lots of trail cameras out there, I mean, I've caught the big muddy wolf on multiple trail cameras. There's so many trail cameras in the woods, there's not too much that goes unnoticed, um, when people do get wolf videos or photos, they generally submit those to us. We can look at and verify, nothing, nothing's better than a picture, right? Uh, when someone says they saw a wolf, it's really hard to tell what they're looking at, they send us a picture, that clears up a lot of things. Uh, also, in some areas, we'll find out that there's wolves because all of a sudden there's a, a dead livestock animal, and the depredation investigation reveals that, yeah, this, this was a wolf attack. That does, doesn't happen down here, but it has happened in other parts of the state. Our staff also do follow-up surveys, we do camera surveys, grid surveys, they do track surveys. Uh, in the winter, we do a lot of time, spend a lot of time in helicopter, on snowmobile, up in the air, looking at county wolf tracks in the snow. Snow tells a, tells a good story about how many wolves are in an area, and, and wolf tracks are pretty distinguishable. Uh, just to give you a side note, a wolf track, people submit us, submit photos all the time of, of tracks. And uh, most, like, the vast majority of track photos that people submit are either cougar or coyote. But we're, we're talking about a wolf track is at minimum four and a half inches long, from top to bottom, that's like, basically like the size of my hand. I've put my hand like in a wolf track before, they have huge paws, so just something that we, that come on one of the thresholds. Like if it's not that big, it's probably not a wolf track. We also do captures, we do aerial captures in the winter, our wolf team is up in the air, I don't know if they're up in there today, but they're up in the air in January capturing and coloring wolves, and in the summer they do ground captures, they select, lay lit trap lines and use lethal traps to capture and color wolves. Just to give you an idea of the stuff that we have to sort through, this is a map of reported wolf sightings in the state. As you can see, there's a very large pack that lives in Seattle and Olympia and Tacoma, just kidding, that's uh, that's where people submit wolf sightings. Um, the actual packs are overlaid in blue, it's kind of hard to see, but just, just to give you an idea of the number and locations of the sightings that people report. I would say ninety percent of the wolf sightings that get reported are a hundred percent coyote. Uh, a lot of them are domestic dog, uh, this, uh, public can't see, but on the staff side, when people submit an observation report with a photo, we can look at the photo. And it's like, yep, that's a coyote, or that's a husky that has a collar on it, I mean, it's, some of it is harder to tell, and a lot of times people just say, I saw a wolf walking through the forest. And it's very possible they did, every year we get a couple of wolf sighting reports in the Gifford Pincho Forest, and they say, hey, we saw a wolf cross the road. I can't say that they did or didn't, it's just hard to verify, so unless we have, you know, concrete evidence, a photo, a track, something like that, it's really hard to tell whether or not people actually did see a wolf. There was a ki- uh, wolf reporting a sighting in Centerville the other day, and it was a, a coyote. Um, there was a wolf report in the Gifford Pincho from elk season this year, and the guy sent me a video, and it's clearly a domestic husky. I don't know what it was doing out there, but it's definitely a domestic dog, so that's the sort of things we have to so- sort through to try to determine what actually is, is real and how many wolves and where we have wolves running around. So here I put together a timeline, and we've heard about wolves in Clickcat County, this timeline gives you an idea of when things showed up, when things disappeared, and I have, there are four different wolves that I'll talk about, and they're colored. Or just give you an idea, just when you, when you see this, so, uh, in twenty fourteen, we had someone photograph the wolf on Dal's mountain. And they sent in the photographs, and sure enough, Dal was a wolf, I have the photos on my computer, it's a wolf, we never heard about it after that. When, when those hikers saw the wolves, that wolf in the spring, I have no idea where that wolf went. So, that was like the first reported sighting in Clickcat County, first verified sighting in like modern history, we'll call it, since wolves were basically removed or extirpated from the state. Besides than that, so in December twenty-one to January twenty-two, there's a wolf, we call him Wolf one oh nine M, M for male, that was his individual caller number. He was captured in the Ellensburg area, and in twenty-one to twenty-two, that wolf left that area. He left Ellensburg, crossed I ninety, and it caught our attention, like, hey, what is this wolf doing down here? This is the first wolf that we know of, it's like coming down into the South Cascades, so he dispersed from the Nantam Pack near Ellensburg, and he settled predominantly in, in, we call it GMU five seventy-eight, this area between the White Salmon River and the Clickcat River. I have a map of his, his territory that he covered here, um, but over the winter, he wandered his way down through the Yakima Reservation, bounced back and forth, came all the way down to the Columbia, and then decided to hang out here. April of twenty-two, so a few months later, all of a sudden we started getting pictures of another wolf, this one did not have a collar. And we later determined that this was a female from some genetic testing that the University of Washington did. So, a couple months there, this female shows up, we have no idea where she came from, but now all of a sudden we have, we went from zero wolves to two wolves in a very short amount of time. And they started running together, we couldn't call them a pack at that time because they weren't running together in winter. But, um, by January of that following year, they're still together, it's winter, now we can officially call them a pack because they meet the definition of a pack, two wolves traveling together in winter. So the Yakima Nation uh provided the name of the Big Muddy Pack, and in April of twenty-three in our annual wolf, wolf report, we like formally announced, hey, there's this big muddy pack, they've been kind of together since, you know, mid twenty twenty-two, but now they're officially a pack. But by late spring, that uncolored female disappeared, right about the time when they should have been denning and having pups. We quit getting photos and track evidence of that wolf. After that, we, we had no idea where she went, we kept watching all summer long, we did camera surveys, track surveys, and we kept finding the big muddy male alone by himself. So no, no idea what happened to the uncolored female. A couple months later, in April, now all of a sudden we got wolf number three, this is the third wolf, wolf, um, his name, his number is one oh six M. He came out of the Tinoa area, so that's the Clealum area, the Tinoa pack, he crossed I ninety, and these wolves, they have GPS satellite collars on them, that's how we know. That's, if they have a number, then they have a GPS satellite collar on them, and we can track their movement, so I can log on the computer and see where they're at basically at any given point in time. And that wolf crossed I ninety, and eventually hung out, this generalizing called rimrodd. And that wolf crossed I ninety, and eventually hung out, this generalizing called Rimrock Lake. Down to the slopes of Mount Adams. He overlapped with the Big Muddy Territory a little bit. But he kinda occupied that central, south cascades down to Mount Adams. Then in the fall of twenty twenty three, that wolf was found dead. And since it is, was dead in the federal area, the federally projected area, the US Fish and Wildlife Service. Is currently, still currently investigating that wolf mortality. Um, it's an active investigation, so they don't release details generally until the investigation is closed, so. I, the boxes around them mean that they're now no longer in the picture, so. Yellow, uh, Wolf one oh six showed up, by the fall, that wolf was dead. In March to April of twenty twenty four. We had now had a third colored wolf that we watched disperse down to Clickatet County. That wolf came from the Shady Pass pack near Lake Shalane. I mean, he came all the way down the cascades. And that one started occupying an area between the Clicky Tat River and uh Highway ninety seven in the Simcoe Mountains. These are generalizations that wolf basically traveled east to west in the Simkows, but he went, you know, on a walkabout down to Lyle and Wishram one day. The big muddy pack, like I mentioned, that occupied the area, you know, in, in GMU five seventy eight, went to um. Battleground one day, just headed west, decided that wasn't the place for him, came right back. So they do go on these long-distance movements, generally looking for a mate, but. You know, I'm, I'm generalizing the area that they're occupying here, just for this narrative. So this past October, that wolf that had dispersed from the Shady Pass pack was found dead. Uh, the US Fish and Wildlife Service is currently investigating, but they did put out a couple of press releases about that wolf's, wolf's death. And that was this past October. I went and recovered that wolf carcass uh for the US Fish and Wildlife Service, and again. I'll talk about this a little, a little bit more detail. The US Fish and Wildlife Service has management authority, but we're a lot of times, their boots on the ground. They don't have staff all throughout the state, so they rely on. Rely on state fish and wildlife to do a lot of the work. Their, their special agents in charge are still the ones that are investigating these mortalities. So then in December, Wolf one oh nine M, so that's the wolf, the male from the Big Muddy Pack. He was also found dead, and the US Fish and Wildlife Service is currently investigating that one as well. So in the past two years, we've gone from. Four wolves, now we're down to zero wolves in Clickatet County that we're aware of. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be a wolf showing up tomorrow, but that's where we're at currently. This has made the news, you know, this is on the US Fish and Wildlife Service's page. There's a ten thousand dollar reward offered for, this is in October, so for that. The, the first wolf. Okay, there's another award page for the Big Muddy Mail, um, that came out in January. The Center for Biological Diversity has also tapped on an additional ten thousand dollar rewards. Now the reward is up to twenty thousand dollars for information leading to. Um, conviction of someone um with the killing of those wolves. So. Cleveland County has been in the news recently. If you do a social media search or news search, you'll find quite a few articles about. This, these recent wolf killings, um, it's a big deal. And this is. Where, we're talking about the first wolf pack in the, you know, the Big Muddy Back was the first wolf pack in the South Cascades in recent his, modern history, and now it's, it's gone. So, um. You know, in part of the UW, uh, U, University of Washington Population Monitoring. Wolf recolonization in this area played a big factor, projected wolf recolonization. So. You know, in theory, if we had male and female wolves that produce offspring, we could be looking at a different number of wolves than we have today. If those wolves in the, from the Big Muddy Pack would have survived and reproduced and had. By now, in theory, could have had multiple litters, so. Uh, it changes the, changes the narrative a little bit when uh the wolf population. Well, hang on, having, having zero wolves down here currently. Couple additional notes about wolves in Clickatet County. Like I had mentioned before. This is the federal, currently it's the federally listed area, and the US Fish and Wildlife Service is the lead, but as I said, they don't have. Um, the staffing that we do, they have a handful of staff, and so they rely on state fish and wildlife to do a lot of the on-the-ground work. In theory, they're in charge, even if there's a, a livestock depredation by wolves, but um they ask us to do the investigation because we're the local resources. And on that note, there have been zero confirmed or probable. Those are two different terms that we use uh in classifying livestock depredations. There have been zero confirmed or probable wolf depredations on livestock in Clickatet County. There have been a handful of instances where people have called in, reported depredations, um, where fish and wildlife. We respond and do a depredation investigation. I have all of those on file, all our necropsy investigations of. All reported depredations, but none of them have been probable or confirmed. There have been a handful that have been. Um, unknown because the carcass was too far gone, and you know, it'd been months since that animal had died, but there was on, none of the. Carcasses do have, we um seen evidence of a, a wolf depredation. There's a whole component of this, um, and I'm working with uh the different conservation districts and the Farm Service Agency. To talk to livestock producers in the next couple of weeks again about this, but there's a whole portion of wolf management in the state that has to do with livestock injury lot. Or loss and compensation related to that, so. For a rancher to get compensated for a livestock loss, WDFW us, we must. Be the ones investigating and making the final determination on the cause of death. That determination determines whether or not the producer can compensate, get compensated for that livestock injury or death that, you know, maybe wolf-related. So, um, you can take a step back and just, this is just a bunch of maps and a timeline of wolf movement in Washington. It's. Pretty fascinating. It's not every single year, but. So in two thousand eight, Washington documented the first pack. Doesn't mean there maybe wasn't more wolf activity going on, but that's when we. First to first could say, hey, we have a defined pack in this area. So two thousand eight was the first defined pack. By two thousand twelve. We had, what is that, one, two, three, four, five, nine confirmed packs in the state by two thousand twelve. You can see where most of these packs are coming from. They're in the North Cascades or the northeast part of the state. Twenty seventeen, you can look at the pack territories. This is like the coolest map I think I've seen. Look at that wolf dispersal. This, now, these are just wolves that had GPS satellite collars on them. What uncolored wolves do, we don't know. But these are wolves that had GPS satellite collars on them. Uh, that one wolf, one of the wolves left northeast Washington, crossed Idaho into Montana. Came back around Boise, went all the way down to Yellowstone. That's like a nine hundred mile movement, so. I think people generally tend to underestimate wolves, a wolf's, wolf's capacity for movement. The other one, um, you can see going into central Montana, that's a seven hundred mile movement. So on the grand scheme of things, when we're talking about wolves that were brought into Montana from, uh, you know, Jasper National Park, that's only three hundred miles. It's nothing for a wolf to travel several hundred miles, um, to get where it wants to go. Again, we have movement back and forth across the border. Wolves don't care about political borders, they're just moving. Um, so we have wolves that I'm sure that come down to do the same, these same type of movements from other areas. If wolves in Washington are leaving, I'm sure we have similar types of movements of wolves coming into Washington.
And so what, what timeframe is that? Seven hundred, nine hundred miles?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, that's within the course of that year, so that's. Probably a couple of months, if I had to guess. For a wolf, that wolf that left, crossed Idaho, went back into, you know, Idaho and down to Yellowstone. I don't know exactly. I don't have the data offhand, but that probably took them a couple of months to do.
What, what, what about per day?
Uh, I watched the big muddy wolf go from Gilmer in Clickatet County to um. East of White Swan, so it's forty straight behind miles in the middle of winter in two days. So went up and over the mountains, multiple feet of snow in two days. These animals, they're, if you were to shave a wolf down, they're basically like a, like a greyhound, long-legged, fluffy, they're. People also have a habit of overestimating a wolf's weight. On average, our wolf, our male wolves are like ninety to a hundred and ten pounds. On a, on a upper end of the scale, we might have a hundred and twenty pound wolf. Like that, that's, that's a big wolf. They're just fluffy. They look way bigger. They have huge paws for crossing snow. Um, they're just really darn good at moving. So that's twenty seventeen, jump toward twenty nineteen, you can't, the maps are a little different, you can't quite see their dispersal paths quite as well. But these are all colored wolves that are leaving Washington State, taking different trajectories across the West. You see the black lines, the blue line, the red line. You, now you see, you start seeing more wolf packs popping up on the map. We're at twenty twenty now, you know, one wolf went up, way up into central British Columbia. Twenty twenty one, we have a wolf in the blues that went way down, um, into southern Oregon, um, towards northern California. You can see wa- uh Wolf one oh nine M. You can see that yellow one in the central cascade, that's where he's leaving the Nantam Pack and starting to make its way down. By the end of twenty twenty one, he had made his way, his way down into the Yakima Reservation. The, the next year's map, twenty twenty two, shows you now he finished, you know, his movement, and by twenty, you know, early twenty twenty two, he was down in Clickatet County. Again, you have wolves going up into Canada, wolves going east, wolves going south. You don't have any wolves really going west, but. Uh, and this is twenty twenty three, so this is the most recent map, this is from last year. In twenty, in April of this year, we'll have the twenty twenty four map, if that makes sense. You can see uh Wolf one oh six M. You can see how uh convoluted his path was coming back and forth here. That was the one um that died. Uh, in, in the fall of twenty three. So he moved all up and down the cascades, um, trying to find a place to live, probably trying to look for a mate. That's the main reason why wolves move is trying to find breeding opportunities where they can establish their own pack. So he spent a lot of time going up and down the cascades, trying to find a place to settle.
So, did, and he went back?
That one, no, he was, he was found dead in the fall of twenty twenty three. It looks like he went back, uh, you can see the yellow line on the east part, that's where he first crossed. I ninety, circled it back around, went back up towards I ninety at some point, but stayed down in this area and was found dead in the central cascades, or south central cascades.
I'm sure you have these conversations, but to me, just looking at the map. You took that map and you overlaid it with population maps, and you overlaid it with possible interactions with farms and ranches and everything. I wonder they're up where they're at. And how sensible is it to keep that south cascade unit in there? Expecting that we might be trying to reintroduce them into what's not prime.
That's a good question, and so that came up in the periodic status review, the five-year periodic status review. It was like. When we wrote that, when that plan was written, and back in two thousand eleven, we had a couple of packs in the state. We didn't really have any data to. From, you know, we used data from other states to kind of project what wolf recovery would look like. Um, during that periodic status review, they decided, uh, and ended up keeping these same recovery regions, but that was a discussion that. Has been had, and the commission, the fish and wildlife, or our, our fish and wildlife commission has talked about, it's like, hey. Do these recovery regions still make sense now that we know we have wolves out here? Uh, if you pay attention to legislative bills, there's, last year there were some bills that were introduced. This year, there's some bills that were introduced that. Talk about county by county delisting, that, so, and those didn't make it through the legislature, so we'll see. Um, I don't know the House bill off the top of my head, or the Senate bill that's proposed this year, but. There's discussions, you know, especially here, this is from the northeast Washington. They're saturated with wolf. We are well beyond our recovery objectives in northeast Washington. And those producers and county officials have long said, hey, we're, we're well above where we need to be, you know. Can we delist here? And right currently, based on the wolf management plan, we don't have localized delisting. We currently either delist as a state or. Or not at all, and you can, as you saw from the Fish and Wildlife Commission notes, you know, we, we. Presented the option to delist or downlist from endangered to sensitive, and that was um rejected, so.
Is federal less per state?
No, they, it's depending on where they're at, they generally delist. And populate distinct population segments, which is kind of a confusing term. Uh, and there's been lots of lawsuits over even that too. And the theory being like, hey, uh, you might have a distinct Rocky Mountain population segment, but though that population segment influences recovery in these. Other potential segments, so it is really confusing, um, lots of arguing back and forth on that, but. Uh, and going back to the, the local abundance thing, there have been. Suggestions by county officials in the northeast that we should move wolves from areas where there's a lot, unless, let's speed recovery. In other areas, and that has not gotten any traction, that's not in our wolf management plan, that we will be relocating wolves in the state. So wolves are, just to be clear, wolves are not being relocated anywhere in the state. Those are all natural movements on their own. But there are some who have expressed desire to see wolves over here so that we can re, reach our recovery objectives sooner, so. Just to give you an idea of some of the conversations that are had at levels outside of fish and wildlife.
Right? No, that's, that's, that's really awesome, that's.
Yeah, thank you.
You, you got a cool job. Great?
Uh, I think I'm good, thanks. And just to give you some.
Yeah, you're in a conflict.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
You've, you've been in conflict too, resolution.
Just to give you some context on the types and amount of outreach that I've been doing in this area specifically, and this does not include. One-on-one landowner meetings. These are official presentations that I've done um over the last, I think, be. Five, six years now. Um, the red ones in the bottom, those are ones I've got upcoming. Um, I spend a lot of time talking about. Carnivores, wolves, bears, cougars, and trying to prevent conflict, like I said before it happens. Working with, you know, I put on a big uh seminar in Golden Dale in, uh, when was that? Twenty, in the, in the winter of twenty twenty two, I, I worked with a, an organization, put on a workshop called Strategic Ranching on a Landscape with Wolves. We had folks come in um from other states to come talk about, um, this is specifically for livestock producers about ranching. In areas where we have wolves and how to do that effectively, efficiently, with less, you know, with reduced conflict, so, um. Trying to be proactive as much as possible. I'm always open to suggestions. I've been contacted by now, there's another different organization that contacted me yesterday that wants a presentation about. About wolves, so, uh, yeah, if you, if there are avenues, or you have members of the community that want to hear more about wolves, I'm happy to. To talk to, to folks in the community about it, in any number of capacities, so, but that, kind of wrap it up and. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, so to, um. So basically, what, what's your terminology for? Uh, if a wolf, wolf kills the livestock?
A depredation.
Depredation. So none of those and none of the lower classification. Have occurred in Clickatet?
Correct, we have had no confirmed or probable wolf depredations in Clickatet County.
And is what? Are, are cattle birth rate down in Clickatet County?
I don't have any.
Those numbers, th- that's a great question.
That, that, that's what I've been hearing from. And that was never on my radar, that like, you know, I was like, oh, if you got livestock killed. I never, not, not being a rancher, I never, never kind of like. Birth rate significantly dropped in birth rate.
And so when we talk about depredations, we call those direct losses, right, where it. Is it a direct kill? There's a whole component of the livestock loss program that's called indirect losses as well, and in. It is possible for a livestock producer to file loss claims for indirect loss, so lower birth rates. Um, lower market sale weights, you know, if, in theory, if uh your, your range cows are being harassed. By wolves all summer long, they spend less time grazing, and more energy burnt, they could come in off the range at a lower rate. And so livestock producers have indeed filed claims for uh indirect losses due to cattle weights. So, well, a lot of the compensation for livestock loss is, I'll announce, called the Wolf Livestock Interaction Protocol. It's available on our website. Uh, there's a whole structure for, for payment for direct and indirect losses. Um, it's called like that, the Wolf Livestock Interaction Protocol. And the Wolf Advisory Group, which is an eighteen-member advisory group that helps advise the department on different wolf issues, they, they. Developed that interaction protocol and presented it for the most part to the department, and I think. The livestock loss portion of that is, has been revisited recently, um, to try to potentially make it. Easier for producers to file claims, so that's an ongoing discussion, but. Uh, that's, that's what it's there for. We, the legislature appropriates money for livestock producers to compensate them for the losses that are. Probable or confirmed, and just to take a step back, we use both of those terms. The confirmed me, uh, depredation means, you know, without a shadow of a doubt, we're, we're positive that species X killed this livestock or injured this livestock animal. Probable is a little bit more uh gray, where, hey, a lot of the signs are present, that species X killed this animal. We're not a hundred percent certain, but. Based on the evidence we have, collar data, tracks, things like that. It would, you know, it, it's reasonable to say that.
That was in the area.
It was in the, well, and not even necessarily in the area, but in the area and had some of the other signature bite marks. Uh, when I do depredation investigations, all carnivores have slightly different um signatures, so we look for different things, whether it be a, a bear attack. Coyote attack, wolf, domestic dog, cougar, uh, bobcat, things are, things are different. That's why I, I shave carcasses, all skin carcasses. We do extensive, you know, uh, scene investigations and all that come into play. There's also a classification that we use that's um. Unconfirmed or, and also an unknown cause of death, and sometimes, as much as I dislike to tell a rancher that I don't know what caused it. Sometimes there's just not enough evidence present to say one way or another, especially. You know, in areas where maybe a sick animal has died, and I'm not a veterinarian, so I don't get into, you know, if, if I can confirm that a wildlife animal. Didn't kill it, I don't generally delve into the other causes. Once I know it's not wildlife, I, I don't have the ability to look for viruses or, or other. You know, pneumonia or things like that, but, yeah.
And so did, did I miss? Birth rates in Clickatet County?
So I don't have any data on that, um, no livestock producers have. So I don't have any data on that. Um, no livestock producers have presented, um, any information or, or desire to file a claim for losses or express that they have, um, potentially lower birth rates or, um, lower weight gains coming back from the range.
Not, not for anything, not for cougar, not for?
No, this is where it also gets tricky. There are not, there's not compensation based on legislative funding and program for that from cougar. So it's very difficult. The rules for wolves are different. Cougar, for wolves, all sorts of livestock species are eligible for compensation. Or like I said, for cougars, it's cattle, sheep and horses. Zero for bears, zero for coyotes. And then, um, you have to be a commercial producer for, to be eligible for, um, cougar losses. And there are no indirect losses for cougars, but there's indirect losses for wolves. Wolves get a lot of attention and there's a lot of legislative funding specifically earmarked for wolf compensation in these scenarios. Not to say that there couldn't eventually be for cougars or bears, but that's where we're currently sitting.
Okay. No, I didn't. So. Okay, uh, let's go over that one more time.
Sure.
With, uh, what that's for. So wolves.
Yep, and this is outlined in the WAC as well. I'm not probably be able to recite all of the livestock species. But basically, if there are, um, losses from wolves to basically any, any livestock species, including guardian dogs, um, are eligible for compensation for direct losses and indirect losses.
Okay.
For cougars, the only species that are eligible for compensation are cattle, sheep and horses on commercial operations.
Okay.
Those are the kind of two main reasons that we concern with. And, uh, if you, you know, would like to review it in writing, I can find the WAC that also points to that as well. I, I continually have to revisit that to remind myself of what's eligible and what scenarios and why. But take a look at that, like, well, Wolf Livestock Interaction Protocol, there's a lot of things that are outlined in there. That's one of the documents I bring with me when I sit down at a rancher's, uh, you know, kitchen table and we talk about wolves and what to expect. And I've been talking about this since before wolves showed up. Um, I started this position in twenty sixteen and right off the bat, we were working with landowners, landowners, livestock producers, ranchers, trying to get them prepared for what to expect when wolves do show up, because it's a lot easier if they, they have something in their mind about how it's going to operate than trying to play catch up. So that's, that's kind of my, my goal.
That's got me.
Well, I appreciate you coming.
Oh, very much.
Updating this.
Happy to, happy to talk if there are other wildlife-related topics that.
No, just some of the stuff you answered is some things I've heard.
Yeah. I'm happy to do this on a more regular basis, annually or something like that. Whenever the, the board of commissioners wants an update, feel free to reach out. There are other wildlife issues that maybe our district biologists are more versed on, or fall more within their wheelhouse. It's on hoof disease or western gray squirrels or anything like that.
Yeah, the hoof, hoof would be a good future one to discuss, because it's surprising how many you see cripple more on the west and Clickatet County than I've noticed in three eighty-two.
Correct. Yeah, and that's a whole.
Or three eighty-eight.
Whole day of, of, of presentation in itself. I'm happy to pass along, if you'd like a hoof disease presentation, I can work with our biologist on that.
Yeah, down the road, I, I think.
Sure.
How, how, how many, uh, with Fish and Wildlife in Clickatet County?
Pardon?
How many are there?
How many biologists?
Clickatet County.
Yeah, so we have one district biologist and she covers Clickatet, Skamania and Clark County. Her name is Stephanie Bird.
Well, not, not just biologist, but.
Oh, employee, total employees?
Yeah.
Uh, well, let's see. We have three, we have one, one district biologist, two assistant biologists, that's three. Myself is the conflict specialist, a private lands biologist, that's five, uh, one habitat biologist, six. I couldn't honestly tell you how many fish program folks we have. They have so, so many seasonal staff in Columbia River and tributaries. That's a whole other world that I don't really delve into.
There's a lot of them.
And we have, I think, five enforcement officers that cover Clickatet County as well.
Okay.
So that kind of breaks, in, in general, that's sorry, staff we have. We're not talking all, you know, a hundred, but, yeah.
All right, questions? All right, I'll, I'll have more later. I'd say, and I promise you, I'd come to Clickatet.
Well, yeah, if you get a chance to watch that, uh, the wolf video that I referenced, I'm happy to send you the link, how to catch, how to count a wolf. And then check, take up, take a look at those two books I recommended as well. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
You too. Nice to have met you.
Yeah. Nice to see you all.
You haven't, you haven't met Todd yet?
No, I met his counterpart. She's been very quiet today.
And I have a.
I'm not new.
Yeah. Pretty close.
See you again.
See you all later and have a good rest of your day.
What, what are the Clickatet? What are your community?
Uh, uh, the community council meetings. We meet on the second Tuesday of every month at six thirty at the Clickatet Community Center.
Oh, you meet at the.
Yep. Six thirty, second Tuesday of every month. We can try to get to the dates ahead of time as a reminder if you're interested in coming. Yeah. Love to, love to have commissioners there if you can make it.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I have one thing on my calendar. Now I just seem to find it. Uh, have training Thursday. Yeah, I would say training.
Oh, good.
Into two instances.
I think that's that Hood River paper, Charlie.
What?
That last time walking out, I think he said the Hood River paper. I didn't know he knew who it was.
No, I was, I was looking at the camera. I was like, oh, that's probably.
Oh, he's from the Sentinel?
Yeah, he was at Wishram. No reason to say that.
Okay, so you have training.
Yeah, and then, uh, Friday. There, I don't know if there's one or more commissioners going to the filming at Salilo at five thirty.
At the Discovery.
Discovery Center.
That's Friday. Yeah. Friday.
Yeah. If I have a question. I did listen into yesterday, interview committee. More into it, on House Bill eleven eighty-eight. Um, Mr. Jurors. Supporting the bill and law sack. Supported the bill that's on the, uh, FSEC not trumping local control. Uh, but it was for county authorities and tribal authorities to.
And we did get a plot on your email, a plot something. Uh, from our.
Okay.
I think goes around there too. It's on your email.
I seen it.
So he sent us that.
I seen it this way. That's as far as I got.
And then there was another one, um, five four oh four, which is on his list that hasn't resigned or support. Check that out. We want to go and support it. It's about law enforcement.
Offered funding?
It is on the legislative priority.
Really? Yeah, it's on our calendar now. Signature training canvassing training on Thursday. I did, uh, visit with Karen yesterday and she wanted, said she had time for me to get together with her Thursday morning and go through the budget. I have EC Finance Committee on Friday. Then Sacred Hills and that's kind of my week. I didn't even burn off next week. I'm still focusing on this week.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think tomorrow I should have my, my schedule calendar as well.
So tomorrow I have a Clickatet for economic development with the community council. About some things that they have going on, some emergency, you know. They've always been interested in getting the shade back.
Yeah, so that is.
It's tomorrow at ten o'clock, Sage County.
Okay. So you're going to be there to take care of that, because I was invited and he said, well, I have two commissioners. I said, best not to. Uh, so thank you for doing that. Good. I'm supporting that.
Oh, yeah. And then, um, well, now I'm meeting in bystander one. Or be rejected with the city.
So is there, I got thinking about that last night. Okay, the C is going to be X. We need Y. Is there grant funding for X gap?
I had talked to Jen about that, but what have we got, what she got? Courtney did say that she thought.
And that's my only, giving my input because.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then Thursday, it's law Saturday. There's law Sunday. So, brunch home, I'm going to come halfway back and stay and with family and go to, uh, the Southwest Washington Paging the Disability Board. We're going to chair on the share in Vancouver on Friday morning, or Friday afternoon. And as soon as we get done with that, we have heading to the Dallas, we'll be just every third or four.
So no workshops on Thursday. Going to recess this meeting.
Now you got your.
Heard you.
Um, also just board report, uh, last week I did have my airport board meeting. And we heard a little bit of what I've been working on about, um, the contracts between the city, uh, the county in regards to the airport and the joint operating agreement, how we appoint a board, who we have on the board, and then also the hiring of the airport manager. I think you could say that those documents are probably antiques. And so I've been going through them. I'm going to make a packet for both you and Paul over this next week. So I can hand you the packet so you can just reach where I am about that board. Because we'll have to have a vote and make decisions on what does our future at the airport look like? And what do we communicate with the city? Or I, you guys have all the information to make those decisions. Um, and then I did, uh, make arrangements with Elise, who's reached out. And they're trying to get a date together that the city council on here, people over in the U S and visiting. But hopefully all have the.
No, I appreciate that, because that's. You've done all the, the heavy lifting and.
Decisions you don't know.
We, yeah, no, I'd like to. I'd like to unravel that mystery.
Yeah, relay on you.
I think it's a mystery because it just became so vague because it just lacked in so long, everybody getting together. Just like we hear so many times. And I'm deciding. Good for everybody.
Well, good day.
It's your apple. Is it time to quit?
I'm not used to meetings.
We need one more signature. It does say chair now for Lori. It, it does say chairman. But there's chairman on there twice.
Oh. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Also?
Good, good. Any discussion?
Well, there's. I'm in a discussion.
Here and now, here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For adjourn, tell next.